I'm called to order the irregular meeting of Dayton City Council for Tuesday, April 22nd. Stand for the pledge.
... United States of America, in two republics which are stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, in the routine of justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion, a second for the agenda.
Make the motion to approve.
Scott?
Second.
And Dave? Any changes?
I do need to add Resolution 2025 to Item 0. I just missed listing it as a resolution, but maybe I have to along with it.
Oh, okay. Any other changes? All those with that amendment, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Agenda carries five to zero, move on to consent. Need a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I just have a question for clarification on the payment of claims. On page 30, there's a couple of things that just have the credit card listed, but they don't have it listed out. So there's CC and CCWS. I was wondering what those stood for.
It would be city council work session. Those are likely for minutes.
Okay.
Paying for a minute's time taking. It's city council work session, city council meeting, probably a planning commission meeting or a parks commission meeting.
Now the abbreviations make sense. So, thank you, I appreciate that.
No problem.
I've got a question on towing. Three squads, are we using a St. Cloud mower or were the cars happened to be up there at the time?
Typically...
Typically, we're using Burdas out of Rogers to tow the squads. I can't speak specifically to the situations in which they were towed. I know we had one go down that went up to Cornerstone, but not sure the other two.
The towing companies out of St. Cloud, I think. It says St. Cloud Towing on it. I don't understand why we'd be using a St. Cloud towing company, though.
I believe Burdas was bought by a company that's based out of St. Cloud now, so it's all part of that company.
Okay, that makes sense.
Is that it?
That's all I got.
Anybody else?
On Item D, the territorial grow final plant development agreement, there's a typo on page 47. It's up toward the top.
What, I'm sorry, which page was that?
Page 47 of our packet. SWI, it says which by E. So maybe it was supposed to say maybe. Right up near the top.
That same typo showed up somewhere else. I think there must be a copy paste.
Yeah, I thought that rang a bell, but it didn't ring a bell in that area.
I have it on page 105, that same error. So, my guess is there's a copy paste error somewhere that is making its rounds.
And then I need to talk about the template that's used.
Any more, Dave?
No.
You have any, Stephanie?
No, I'm good.
Okay. I have something on E, but I was hoping somebody had something, so I could delay a little bit. E is the tree, Public Trees Ordinance. Section 53 dot 07A.
You know what page it is of the document? Of the, sorry, of the packet?
Okay. No.
It would be round 102.
See if I can get to 53. I guess my question is, is, and maybe this is an obvious thing, there's a list of things that let the city go in and fix things, and one of that list is threatens public health, safety, and welfare. And I'm just kind of wondering what exactly that means when it comes to trees.
So that's basically if there's some trees over sidewalk where the branches may come down and hit a pedestrian on the sidewalk, I think that's pretty much what that is aimed at.
Okay, it had that listed, too. That's why it does seem kind of, it's kind of a superfluous thing, so, okay. That same area, 5307B, it says that property owners, quote, "have the duty to remove them." What does that mean in the context of our legal system? Does that mean they must?
They do, yes. That is what that means, Mayor. It means that the, it gives the city the authority to enforce the code for a failure to remove a diseased tree by declaring it a nuisance, and that then the city, the city's authority to go in and mitigate the nuisance, or abate the nuisance, comes into play.
Okay.
Based on that, I have an issue with that.
I was gonna say, I was just...
I don't believe anybody in the city of Dayton is gonna tell Three Rivers Park what to do with all the Emerald Dashwater out in that park.
Right.
And I probably have 50 of them in my woods, too. And there ain't nobody gonna tell me that I gotta cut all 50 of them trees down.
I, I, yeah, I'm not sure. Personally, I'd like to see B just struck. I'm guessing that's where you're at, Scott?
100%. We got no business being, we got no business being on anybody's property to tell them to cut a tree down.
I don't...
Go ahead.
I just think that this is just for the private property owner. It's not the city going in there and taking the trees out. And I think that, you know, that is the purpose of that, that their homeowner shouldn't expect the city to come and take the trees down. It's the public, the private property owner whose responsibility that is.
My issue with it, though, is if they don't, then it sounds like we can cite them.
That's right. Under this, under this language, you could.
Yep. Okay, well, that's three of us. So, it sounds like, do we want to make a change to be, or is it strike?
Is there a way to encourage without making it a legal requirement?
Well, then, then it's a, basically, a forgotten conclusion. I mean...
I just, I, there is something to be said, if I had a neighbor with a diseased tree right on the property line next to my currently healthy trees...
You would do.
I would be like, deal with that before you, before you infect my trees, which are right next door.
But, you know, Three Rivers, you're at a cross.
Yeah, I know. Luckily, I have no trees right now, but I plan to change that, so I would have a problem with that.
Again, yeah, I guess, I just, I don't, I don't know that we can have an ordinance be informational.
Is there something like on the property line? Like if it's, like in Scott's case, it's the center, whatever, but like if it was right on the border, I'd be more concerned about a tree right on the edge of my property line than...
I don't know how you're gonna put that.
I don't think it matters as far as Emerald Dashwater. It took the whole city.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't matter if it was 10 feet away or...
Right. So, I guess I will make a motion to strike, to go ahead and approve this with, if 5307 be struck. Just to bury this thing. Now, these, this is on consent, so we can't really amend things that are in consent.
Mayor and members of council, I was gonna recommend maybe we remove that out of consent agenda and then separately approve that one. Since there is going to be an amendment to it, typically you can't make amendments to individual items on a consent agenda. It's considered regular in nature or normal in nature, so...
Yeah.
That would be my recommendation to the council, would be to move them off consent, or that item off consent agenda.
Right. Well, then, I will make a motion to pull E out of consent.
I'll second that.
Oh, Scott already, you already did, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so now E is out. Now, any more discussion on the rest of consent? All right, so, would that change? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, consent is passed. Back to E. So, so, yeah, I...
No, you can make your motion, Mayor, if you want to make your motion.
All right. I will then make a motion to pull 5307B from the, from the ordinance and approve it as it is.
I'll second.
Any more discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. All right. On open forum, is anybody here for open forum? Open forum limited to three minutes for non-agend items. State your name and address. No council action will be taken, and items will be referred back to staff.
Do, I need to go up there?
Yep.
Can I come over here?
Hope you fill out one of those pieces of paper or two.
Over here.
They're up here.
Hi, Zach. Good to see ya. Emily.
Name and address and have it.
Great. I am Emily, through office. Hold up first.
No.
Can you go in front of the mic, though, Emily? I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
I'm Emily Asle, said, I live at 15291 Fair Meadows Lane in, obviously, Dayton. I am actually here regarding Sundance Woods Park. It was to our surprise to find a porta potty there this weekend. Sundance Woods Park was originally created as a neighborhood park. There are no street parking. Everybody coming to and fro from the park are, for the most part, neighbors and/or sometimes people coming in from the community. It has been there for a few days and has proven to be nothing but a nuisance so far. Zach, you can attest, because you have received a gajillion phone calls probably from neighbors. We've seen groups of anywhere from four to 12 young kids that are unsupervised, screwing around with it, locking one another in, screaming bloody murder for help getting out. And we also built this neighborhood, built in the neighborhood because we signed an architectural review agreement, and now we have a porta potty essentially in our backyard. We open our bedroom windows, guess what we look at? A porta potty. We sit on our deck and eat dinner. We look at a porta potty, as well as about 20 other houses that now have to look at it. Nobody was notified. We found out because we thought that you guys were gonna be doing some construction and fixing it up, and that's what we thought the porta potty was there for. So, our ask is, in an effort to, one, continue to keep the community safe, mitigate risk of more animals, rodents, that are obviously gonna be attracted to it, and the likely stench that will come from it, and it is also on uneven ground for tipping over from our friendly youth that live here, to remove it.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Fill this out and deliver it to you.
Anybody else? All right, we will close out open forum. Staff, consultant, council, update, staff?
Well, Mayor and Council have a similar update, 'cause I was gonna get some direction from council, what you'd like to do, 'cause we've had quite a few calls from residents in specifically the Sundance Woods neighborhood, but also from other neighborhoods as well, complaining about the new porta potties being delivered, related to, most of them are visual, but also just children playing in them and whatnot. There are several residents that are strongly opposed to this being located in that park. What would the council like to do? So there are some options that staff went through today. It's only been installed for two days, and I've gotten five phone calls, so I, that ratio's not great, so I prefer not to continue that. So there are options, we can remove the porta potties so that it's no longer there. We can also put a screen around the porta potty. We can relocate the porta potty, do a different location. I think Marty and myself would both agree that the location that they chose at Sundance Woods is not the greatest location. Again, it was dropped off by the porta potty company, not by us. So the location could probably be moved, but we could also put an enclosure around it to make it look more visually appealing now. That covers three of the four sides, but not the fourth side. You can't do anything about the fourth side.
And the kids can get in and do whatever else.
And the kids can do whatever else they like to do. So I need some direction from council, what you'd like to do, since this was a council-directed item, to add them to all the neighborhood parks this year, so...
And that was because we were, we did get requests for...
That is correct. That is correct.
All right, questions?
Yes.
Where is it located? Because I was at this park, like, a week or two ago.
Yep, it was delivered yesterday.
Yeah, so it wasn't out there, because I turned around with four small or three small children.
It is between the playground and the baseball field. It's along the trail, from what I understand.
I have a picture of it, like, if you guys want it, I have a picture of it.
I would like to, I'd like to bring it up on the screen, but it's, I'm not real conducive to... Let me, let me suppose. It'll make it way easier. Then everyone at home can see what I'm talking about, too.
And play along.
Yeah, play along.
And we can't just ban kids, right?
Well, right, I guess my question was, is if we have a better place to put it, like...
There were definitely residents that wanted...
Yes, this was a request from residents. It's something I heard quite a bit.
Well, and like I said, I was talking very fast under my breath, but I was at this park for a birthday party, like, a week ago, and I had to turn around halfway through the park to take small children's potty before we got there, knowing there was no bathroom.
So, Mayor, Council, the porta potty's located here. Don't switch. Located here, roughly, from what I understand, from calls.
So where would you advise that it go if it's not there? If that's not the optimal spot, where, if you could pick a perfect spot, where would you put it, Marty?
Over in that patch of trees.
Perfect spot, but we can move it away from that area and put it closer to the road up by, behind, maybe, the baseball field there, behind home plate.
Over here?
Yeah, where the trail comes together. We can put the three-sided screen around it and have the door facing into the park, so it doesn't look like a porta potty from the street, only from the park. That's one suggestion. I think the guy...
I think the guy put it there because he wanted, he wasn't sure where to put it, and we didn't give him great direction. He wanted it to be close to where the kids are playing, you know? These porta potties have got changing stations in as well. That was one of the big requests that we had, so, and that's kind of where he put it. I mean, we're on the other end of it, we could put it there, or we could put it by the wetland as well. There's several options. As long as the guy can get in there to do his cleaning, he can drive on the trail without damaging it.
Yeah, we could also make the enclosure slightly bigger, so it enclose on three sides, but that third side would then be extended and then moved over to the, in front of it, so you could, so the door open still, and then you wouldn't see it from the front, you'd only see, if you looked into it, you'd only see the wood. It's kind of like a walk-in area, if that makes sense to the council. It'd be slightly more expensive, it's not crazy expensive, though. We went through costs, Marty and I, today, just to kind of figure out our costs, 'cause if we do it to one park, we're going to have to do to them all, so it's not going to be, you know, a one-park fix, but...
And these are not fixed in place.
No, they're still not fixed in place.
Doesn't mean that if we put an enclosure on it, we couldn't then keep it more in place, but...
Yeah, if you had a fence around it, it's gonna keep it from tipping over completely sideways.
Correct. So, yeah, I said, I'm looking for council direction and what to do. We are able to do an enclosure, if that's what's desired, but we'd rather have the council direction since it's council direction department, so...
Well, it sounds like the enclosure will help keep it upright, in case somebody tries to not make it upright, but it is gonna be another area for kids to get mischief in. I don't know.
I mean, you're gonna have a bad apple here and there, right? Like, no matter what you do, and I guess...
That's why I...
Again, going back to, like, a lot of our parks don't have potties, and when small children, you're at the park or you get there, and then you gotta pack everybody up and drive home and go to the bathroom or wherever, like...
Find a good tree, yeah.
I mean, okay, I wasn't gonna say that, but 100%, that's happened more often than not. I think we'd rather have a porta potty than have my kid squatting in your woods.
Yep.
Sorry, that's really, like, not an eloquent way of saying that. I apologize. But it is, it's the reality of having, like, you know...
Especially if you have multiple kids, and then, like, you know, you're trying to convince one to go and the other ones are like, but I don't have to.
So if the council wants to let me know after the meeting, that's fine, too. I don't need direction exactly at this moment, but...
Well, it definitely makes sense to move it, then, it sounds like, and you wouldn't have put it there anyways, right? You'd like it behind the diamond.
Yeah. It wasn't the ideal place, but like I said, we didn't give the guy great direction, and he put it where he thought it made most sense. And I think that's what he's done with a couple of others, that Hayden Hills looks like it's got the same idea, he's just dumped it there, but we can move it to a more appropriate spot.
What happens, the, the blue, that must be a basketball court or something?
Of course.
What happens if that person walking there to the right? What happens if you tuck it back in there? That's a patch of trees right there, right?
Ducking over here?
No, no.
No, by the half court.
Right here?
Go up.
Up here? Or further up?
There you go, right by that person.
This is wetland?
Yeah, it's wet, and in there. It's not the ideal...
I'm sure our neighbors would love to have that as the rest of the spot.
Otherwise, you're on a red on a four-way intersection.
It's further away from the houses, then.
Yeah, it is further away.
Over here?
So, yeah, did you ballpark an enclosure, dollar-wise?
I think we'd ballpark today somewhere around $150, $200, something like that. We've got some labor obviously involved with it, but...
Public works, you know, would fabricate...
We can put something together, make some...
Just get some privacy fence and, you know, three walls together.
I have another question. So you had indicated that it wasn't just this park? Was there another park in particular? Was it the same issue of where it was placed?
Yeah, Hayden Hills is the other one.
Hayden Hills was the other one? Just making sure that we're not forgetting anybody.
Yep, no, Hayden Hills is the other one.
And it was placement was the issue?
Placement, yeah. And where was that?
And that's something we could remedy?
We can move the placement of it, no problem.
Like ASAP, like, you know, timeline on that, Marty?
The guys are gonna do it tomorrow.
Okay. Just making sure that we're completing the circle here.
We will build an enclosure by tomorrow.
No, 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 but at least moving it to a more optimal location. I would like an enclosure. I think that the porta potties are a great thing to have in the park.
Yeah.
Not everybody loves them, but I think they'd be well-used. And you have a bad apple here and there, and I understand that. It's also a new shiny thing, and so people see new shiny things, and they need...
The problem that we have here is, you're gonna make some people happy, and you're gonna make some people unhappy.
I think I encourage...
You can't please them all, but...
So, yeah, so maybe Marty and I will go out, it's tomorrow or sometime, we could pick a location for that enclosure and kind of pick the best spot, we think, from residents and perspectives, and can reach out to Emily and chat.
Are we good?
Sounds good.
Did you have anything more?
Yep. Sorry. Get back to the far point. I have one other thing, just to let you know that the council, that I will be out next week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, at a conference. That's all I got. Thank you.
Any?
I don't have anything, sweetie.
Marty?
I've got a few things here, some good, some not so good. Water well for rehab. We're hoping to get the pump back in next week. We have lost some production out of that well due to the two seams that we grouted up to stop the sand coming in. We're also providing water coming in as well. So, Sealing ML has taken up water out of our production capacity, so it's gonna be around 800 to 850 gallons per minute is what it's gonna be knocked down to.
Are we at, like, one forty?
1,200, I think.
It was 1,200 was what it was at before, but, yeah, so...
Can we up that pump, too, to...
I know, I know. Going on the information we had at the time, that seemed like the best way to go, so...
So, based on our usage, are we gonna be able to not use pump two?
Yeah.
Which one was it?
Yeah, we will, especially when well five comes on. I mean, we were not running that well for capacity last year, and we kept up with usage, so I don't think it's gonna be an immediate impact on that. So we weren't running it at 1,200 gallons a minute last year, we were running it around 800 and keeping up with everything that way. So it shouldn't impact us in the, in the short term. Well five coming onboard is really gonna help that out. So it's unfortunate, but, you know, it's better than not having the well at all.
That well won't be traded, right? So we don't wanna use it unless we absolutely have to.
Well two.
Well two.
Yeah, well two, yeah. Well five is currently scheduled for start-up on May 5th, so that's good news. That'll be up and ready to go when the wellhead treatment plant comes online. The masonry work is coming along. I've got a meeting with Magni and the contractors this week to see what the timeline is looking like, but they're making good progress on the masonry.
Oh, back up a little bit. You said that well five is coming online in May?
No, it's gonna be started up. We're gonna start it up in May to make sure everything's ready to go, and it will come online when the wellhead treatment plant is completed.
Right, okay, that's, yep. I thought somehow you found a way to bypass.
I wish I could. Parks, bridge construction at LC Stevens, the bridge is on site, and that should be in place this week. They're hoping to be out of sight and complete this week. We'll see where, how that goes, but they are, all the concrete work is set there, just waiting to put the bridge in place, so that should be good. Irrigation of parks, met with the irrigation installers today, they are gearing up to get started in two weeks. We're waiting on electric companies to commit to a date to get the power to the new wells and the irrigation controllers. We keep chasing on that. We will probably start with the Sundance Woods extension and then the LC Stevens Park project. That's the first two. LC Stevens canoe kayak launch, bidding process has been paused due to the EAW process, we're not as far as long as we were hoping to be, so we paused it for, until June 6th, which probably won't, it shouldn't impact the project getting completed this year. It's still, that's still our goal. LC Stevens master plan, we had a kickoff meeting today with MSA. We're looking at getting a steering committee together, and we're gonna be looking for a volunteer from the council. This will be for three meetings. There'll be initial meeting, you know, to gain ideas and insights for what people want for that. That's gonna be in mid-May. Concepts meeting in July, and a master plan review in October. So you come into three meetings, will comprise of one volunteer from each of the three commissioners, a council member, and two city staff members currently. So I'm looking for a volunteer from you guys. I wonder who that would be?
I've got one question before we get there.
Okay.
And I don't remember, I don't, the numbers aren't in my head. When we did that bridge project, that was just a straight bid, correct? I don't remember.
No, that went out to...
Did we have, no, I know that, it went out for bids, I get that. But was the bridge broke out? Do we know what, I don't know if I recall what the bridge actually cost.
I can't remember, but the bridge was broke out as a bid item in the bid package, I think.
Are you talking about the welded assembly, the bridge?
Yeah, the bridge.
Yeah, so...
I seen it yesterday.
Yeah, so the bridge was part of the...
Huh? What?
Yeah, Councilor Slonik, it was a separate item that was on the bid project. We decided not to use it as an alternate when we were going through the bid process for phase two with LC Stevens, and said we would do that one separately, and we did that as a separate project, standalone project of just the bridge itself. And that was due to cost related to when the alternate came in, it was significantly higher than what we thought it would need to be.
Well, it didn't look like much for what... It just didn't, it did, I, it won't shock me if it was 50, 60 grand.
Yeah.
And I don't see it.
Going north of that.
Oh, it was more than that.
Yeah, it was.
Anyway.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm not a welder, but a good welder could've made it.
So, um, all right, so are you, if you're not, I'm, go ahead.
Huh?
Are you gonna be the?
Well, yeah, I did enjoy the heck out of that, but maybe Dave wants to be part of it too, because I think both of us wanna get that part going.
I think you'll do very good, Scott.
Yep, I'm okay with Scott. Are we good?
Who's volunteering now?
Scott's volunteering.
Okay, that's all I have.
With a smile. That's good.
Good luck to you guys.
When you walk out the door, it's all over, we start new.
Anything else, Marty?
No, that's all for me.
Chief?
That wasn't bad.
Good evening, mayors, members of council. Just wanted to get an update on applications for the fire department. Usually we see about sixteen. Unfortunately, so far this year, we've seen two. We had two from last year, so currently right now we have total of four. So if anyone's watching or anyone's interested in applying for the position, that's open. Another thing for May thirteenth, the staff request will be coming to you for advertising for full-time firefighters. I would ask if you have any questions as it relates to that. If you're requesting data or anything of that nature, if you could get those questions as acts, so I can have that prepared for you for that council meeting instead of having to go back and get it later on. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
And this is, that's regards to which? I didn't catch all of it.
So I'm bringing up the advertisement for the full-time firefighters, Mayor, the next council meeting. So the reason for that, too, just a little bit of background, is it has to do with the Relief Association, too. There's some significant cost to the Relief Association in dissolving, and I just wanna make sure that you guys are reaffirming your commitment to the process that we've gone through so far. To hire them on, move to a duty crew and pay thirty dollars an hour and so on.
Okay.
I forgot to mention one thing. I just wanted to remind people that cleanup day is on May the third from nine to one o'clock.
Could you repeat that? I was distracted.
Cleanup day is on Saturday, May third from nine to one o'clock.
It's the worst day to have it. It's Kentucky every day.
Lucky the best day to have.
Well, I thought I was gonna have a horse in there, but you didn't get enough points.
Yeah. The prices on everything, did we put that in the communicator or where is that?
I think it went in the communicator and I think it's on the website too.
It's also the website, that's correct.
Oh, it is, okay.
It's on the website.
Nothing on behalf of P D tonight.
Nothing.
Hey? No report from me.
Got it.
We'll get there, I'm good.
Sarah?
Um, I just have two things to maybe think about. At one point, I know I've talked to Zach a couple of times about, we have some residents who seem to think that ignoring the city and paying fines is just part of doing what they wanna do. But I don't necessarily want to raise fines so much to like, make them take notice in a way that would like, destroy everybody else when it's only a few people. So I thought that went through my head was whether or not we wanted to think about progressive fining for repeat offenders. So like, if we have someone who is constantly violating our ordinances like, again and again and again, and we slap them with the fine and they're just like, yeah, here's your, whatever, I'm gonna keep on doing it. If some sort of progressive fining for, specifically for that scenario. Again, just something to think about, no decision by any means. Another thing that kind of popped into my head after some feedback is if we would, if there's any, any thought about increasing minimum setbacks? And maybe, or maybe having an absolute minimum that like, you can't go below no matter what, like.
Even though the P U D.
Even through, like, an apps, like, there's the minimum we'd like and then the absolute, like, no. There is no, there's no P U D that makes us willing to go lower than this number. I'm not, like, I don't have an answer right now, just these are things that have been going in my head and I would be happy to think more about them and talk more to Zach about them if other people are even remotely interested. But if, if no one is even remotely interested, then I will move on to my like, other five thousand things on my to-do list. But these are the two that popped for me this week.
We, we did have, when was that, Scott, three, three years, four years?
A couple, three years ago.
Well, discussions on setbacks. I'd be okay with rehashing that to some extent. We got beat up pretty bad.
We got beat up? It's not gonna get to where I'd like to see it, but I mean, whatever.
Do you wanna have that, does anybody else wanna have that discussion?
I think we're beating a dead horse, but.
That would be fine.
I know, I haven't gotten to do it yet, so. So maybe, and not, I don't feel like it's an emergency, if the next, if the next agenda is packed, we can move, it can wait till we've got a lighter agenda, but.
Councilor Van Assen, I think it'd be a great time for have a work session if we're gonna do something like that.
Okay.
I'll like it, take a look and see if we have an available work session time, take a look at it and see.
Perfect. And what about, is progressive fining even an option for us, or is that again, something we would wanna talk about?
Add any type of item in the city court if I'd like.
I'd be okay with talking about it.
Progressifying for repeat offenders who just ignore us and they're like.
I didn't know it was a problem, but I wouldn't hear about it unless Zach brought it up.
It was, it was, it kinda came about in a, in a different conversation than it, or it came up and it was like, well, there's, there's a few key people who just basically ignore the city, because they have enough money to just pay our fines and not actually make any changes. But it's not everybody and it's not even the majority. So, okay. I will talk more with Zach about that and, thank you, that was it for me.
I would like to have a discussion at some point on our, on call volume and ways to reduce it.
In reference to, just wanna make sure I'm on the same page?
The, the.
Fire calls?
Fire calls, sorry. That's it.
Does anybody else wanna, sorry, I wanna make sure that there's more than one direction for that one. Is there more than one person that's willing to look at that?
Yes.
It'd be an interesting conversation.
Thank you, I just wanna make sure more than one.
I know nothing about it, so I would like to learn more.
Dave, you have nothing? No. Stephanie?
I have more of a question.
Okay.
So last council meeting, we removed the trees from some of the park. We got that, they were the alternative.
Oh, yep.
How, because again, I'm new and fresh to this, I don't want it to fall off. So how do we go about bringing that conversation back up? And, because the trees need to be there, right? Like, we need to plant them, we need to put them in, but that question, and correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, I think you brought up that, you know, wanting to look more about like, a local option. So how do we do that? Is that a whole nother bidding process?
It should come up, I mean, Marty should be in contact with the individual, I mean.
Yep, we are mostly talking about it, Adam J, councilmembers and mayor. But Councilor Henderson, the answer would be that we would have city staff, Marty, reach out to the local vendor and get a price and essentially use the same exact, we're gonna call it sheet of items of what we needed to do that same product and then get a dollar amount back to the council. If we have it, and it ends up being over twenty-five thousand, then we are required by state statute to go find another vendor to get the best quote. But if it's not over one seventy-five, then we don't have to worry about that.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, it wasn't just.
We have to do a public bid process, I apologize.
It wasn't just LC Stevens that we.
It was not, it was.
So that's kinda why I'm asking, is LC Stevens is in the, yeah, but I see that with Jay. There are others that we also were, they kinda go on the chopping block, so my question, maybe that's another Marty question.
Marty, have you contacted, have you contacted her yet? Because she did reach out to me and she needs to ding them trees shortly.
Yeah, I've got the tree list, I haven't reached out to her yet, it's on my list of things to do, I'll try and get to it tomorrow. Just so we're aware, normally we have a warranty period on those trees when we put them out to bid. It's usually a two-year warranty period. That means that the person who plants them has to go out and water them and maintain them for two years, so that they're healthy trees at the end of it. So what I'm gonna do is get a cost for just the trees. I'm gonna get a cost for the trees and planting, and I'm gonna get a cost for trees planted and warranty. So there'll be three prices, so you can have a good comparison. But I haven't reached out to her yet, but I will do that, try and get that done tomorrow.
Thank you, Marty. And I think that was my only question, just making sure we didn't drop it off the list.
Okay, on to business public hearing.
Thank you.
You have to click on the screen.
There we go, okay. Item H, so this is a public hearing ordinance twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash eleven, adopting a moratorium on development around one hundred thirteenth and the East French Lake Road area. It's probably easiest to just tell the story of how we got here. So in March, the council and the planning commission reviewed a concept plan for Opedin for a two-hundred-thousand square foot speculation warehouse and distribution center off of Dayton Parkway and one hundred thirteenth. After this conversation took place, the planning commission had an additional conversation of what is the future land use east of this project? So generally speaking, this is a project that was reviewed as a concept plan, and the question is, is what is the highest and best use east of this project? And how is that area going to be served by a local streets? During the April planning commission meeting, the commission reviewed what I'm referring to as a bubble diagram that shows industrial, or it shows one hundred thirteenth avenue being extended from its current cul-de-sac out to East French Lake Road? With industrial to the north of this road and then residential to the south. And then that was compared to a plan in the comprehensive plan that shows a future road being extended along the south edge of the Opedin project to East French Lake Road. So kind of, the question is, that was posed to the commission and also to the councils, do you wanna follow the map that's in the comprehensive plan? Or do you wanna relook at doing something else? The commission did not have a consensus, and so the recommendation from the planning commission was to adopt a moratorium to study this further. The moratorium area would affect kind of a, generally it's going, I'm just going to refer to this as the one hundred thirteenth avenue area and East French Lake Road. So from County Road eighty-one to one hundred seventeenth. This does not affect, I think, currently the city is working with the property owner to extend the road from one hundred thirteenth, or extend right away from one hundred thirteenth to Dayton Parkway. That property, that project is excluded from the moratorium. It does include several properties that are, where we've had a development proposed. So if a moratorium is adopted, as it's written in the resolution, or in the ordinance, it would be a six-month prohibition on development that would allow the city to conduct a study. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to take all six months. If the council wants to go the route of a moratorium, the next question for the study is what level of detail does the council want? If, do you want a bubble diagram which can be done very quickly and cheaply, but it includes a small level of detail? Or we can do a full-fledged site plan, which does cost more money and does take more time, but provides more information.
Connor, we, will this moratorium hinder the Opedin?
Yes, it will.
Here's my feeling on that. I know there was a while back, now it's a totally different council. And I know some of us asked to study this area long before we did the, I forget what you call it.
The other one?
The other one. And, no, no, no.
The master plan?
Master plan.
Ah, got it, got it.
For, we were studying an area that isn't gonna happen for twenty, thirty years probably, in any rate. And here we are, now we're gonna hold somebody up because we were dragging our feet. I can sugarcoat it, I guess, because we didn't take the time to. But I just, I have an issue with it. Now all of a sudden, we have somebody that wants to do something and we're gonna say, oh, well, we forgot to look at something, so that's where I am.
Well, had we, had we looked at this and had we done what we might be doing, they couldn't do what they wanted to do. I, this, you're right, this should've been looked at historically, previously. But we still have time to correct the problem. The problem is all that eastern property, whether or not it has good access through one hundred thirteenth. Yeah, that's really the question, right? Is, does the one hundred thirteenth access, is it good enough?
So there should be, I'm gonna say, an east-west corridor. And the question is, should it be one hundred thirteenth or should it be a new street that follows this line?
So I don't.
Which line?
I really don't think it's gonna take us six months to figure that out.
Well, I don't think we should have a street going from industrial to residential myself, but, because I would block them off somehow. To me, the residential would be on the east side, or, you know, there'd be apartment buildings or something to, to stop the industrial from going there.
Well, the problem is, right now, it's not guided that way.
That's another kind of problem.
Yeah, there's the green bag, so it's kinda. I think the light purple is residential, is it mixed use?
Light purple is industrial through here.
So right now, none of it's guiding residential, I got some of that.
The yellow and orange.
But.
Low density.
Right, that's to the south, okay. I, I just think we, we need to make sure that what we are about to do is, is good. I'm okay with the moratorium, I really don't think it's gonna take six months.
And Opedin is aware of the moratorium?
They're aware of this discussion.
Of the discussion? And they were.
Didn't get a call.
I did not.
Yeah, they're aware.
And can they live with two, three, four months?
They could live with a few months, probably not six.
But I agree with the mayor, I don't think it's gonna take us six. It's just, it's just a couple, maybe one or two, just to sit and have some time. I guess then that leads to the question, if we do the more, if we do the bubble, it won't take us any time at all, we can have it done within like, a month probably. But if it is the more intensive review, how long will it take to get that back? And I guess, who, is that, is that something you do, or is that something that we'd have the stand tech do?
We'd have stand tech do it. So I guess if, if we go the bubble route, I mean, this is it.
Practically done, yeah. I was gonna ask with the conversation.
Can you say more about the differences? Like, high level, these are the, what you're getting, bing, bing, bing.
The bubble diagram is very high level, so that's just saying, you know, within this purple line, it's going to be industrial, we have no idea how any buildings are gonna get laid out or anything that's fit. Opedin's goal is, is to fit a two-hundred-thousand square foot building. We don't know how that fits within the bubble diagram. If we go through a detailed concept plan, that's going to show building sizes and street layouts and lot layouts, it's much, much more detailed.
So where, where exactly is the proposed moratorium? Is it the gray area?
Uh, oh, oh.
Everything from one hundred, from eighty-one to one hundred seventeen.
Okay.
Yeah, so generally, it follows this property line through here and then eats to French Lake Road.
And are we looking at just zoning or is it also road?
We, we need to look at both, land use and road alignment.
I'm fine with the bubble deal.
Yeah, I think the mayor and council need to decide what kind of plan they wanna do, because not saying it's not gonna take six months is a great option, but if you end up with a concept plan, it might take you six months to get exactly what you want in a certain area. So I think we need to make sure we are fine with whatever you want to do related to if you wanna do a bubble diagram or a concept plan. But a concept plan's going to take a significant amount more effort. It's going to be much more detailed, which might take you six months to do, because it will depend on where you want buildings and where do you want exact roadways and so on, so on and so forth.
If you like a bubble diagram, this is going to be it.
Yeah.
Yeah, or very similar. And it's gonna be similar to what you have the land use, it's essentially just colors and.
And I think this is, this would work just fine for, for discussion until we land on what, what we think is right. But don't we ultimately need the, the more serious drawings?
It, it all depends on what you're comfortable with in making a decision, or what information you need to make a, a comfortable decision.
If we're making zoning changes, doesn't that ultimately?
If we're making zoning changes, doesn't that ultimately have to be submitted as a con-plan update?
So one of the, I think the short answer is yes, but it depends on the project. One of the challenges that we have, you know, this is the comprehensive plan map, which refers to the X road alignment, which we're not following. So there's not a whole lot of guidance once you get into there, the 117th corridor.
My personal opinion is I would rather have the better plan. Why my brain just dropped that word? Not the bubble diagram, the better one, even if it would take longer, simply because one of the big conversations that came up, planning commissioner for myself, was the orientation of that building kind of depends on what's happening north of it and the commercial and like what is happening there and will they need another road access? Like my, my okay or not with the open, with that, with the project is what's going to happen with the rest of it. And so that makes me feel like we need to have a solid plan. And yes, should it have happened sooner? Absolutely. But it didn't. And I don't like the, well, you made a mistake once, therefore you just had to roll with it. Like, we have an opportunity to put a pause before more gets done and to hopefully fix it so that this doesn't keep happening.
The other thing with the orientation of a building is, is if we do continue across with the road, that also...
Totally changes the building.
Yeah.
So...
It makes the project not feasible.
As written, they'd have to do a new project, which they could do that. Like, it's not, I mean, I'm, I'm learning quickly that they will always tell you, no, we can't possibly make any changes, the whole project will die. And yet somehow they're able to make the changes and come back with a new option, like...
Yeah, they'll deal with what's put in front of them. It's just a matter of...
Whether they're happy or not, but...
Well, and, yeah, I, yeah.
We have to do the best for this whole area, not just the person who happens to have a plan in front of us. And so my vote is to take the time and do it right.
I'm still, I'm still, so I have my hunch on what you asked is, we still eventually have to have something, right? That's not just a bubble thing.
It seems like it.
Well, the bubble is going to tell you what to do with that whole area, right? Not or yes?
Yes, I mean, but it's not going to have details of how it's going to work or whether or not it's going to work. So if the concern is, how do you fit, you know, and let's say the road, the decision is to extend the road across Opedin's project and then move Opedin's building, we don't know how that's going to fit in the bubble diagram. If you do the more detailed concept plan, it's going to show, okay, you've got a 300, 200,000 square foot building here and a 100,000 square foot building there. It's more detailed.
Well, you're not going to know, that's their business. I mean, you're not going to know what, how big their building, if they can't build the 200,000 square foot, maybe they can't, maybe they can't flip it and they may not want to do 100,000 square foot building.
Yeah.
So it may...
So essentially, what, in going through the concept plan process, the council's playing developer, you know, hypothetically of how do you fit different land uses and how do you maximize the site for, or development?
You are essentially setting the plan of, this is what we want, make it work. That's what, essentially what you're saying. Though it could probably be a middle ground here, I don't think it has to be all one or all the other, but concept plan is, you're playing developer, this is exactly what you want to see, no matter what. The other bubble diagram is just, we like to, you know, here's the colors, here's what we want to see in this general area. And like I said, I'm sure there's a middle ground you can find in between two, but...
If I use the adage you just used, you got six months to get whatever plan you want done, done, or three months.
Yeah, we would prove that in front of you as a moratorium for six months, doesn't mean you can't end it early. You just can't extend it without having another public hearing.
I, I think...
Councilor Henderson has a question, she just doesn't want to ask.
Sorry, no, I do, I just didn't want to interrupt anybody. The one thing we haven't talked about is the price difference. Like in...
It would be most likely staff level and some stand tech.
Or between the...
Between the two, yeah, I just, all of the different things checking off.
It'll be the difference between 30,000 and 100,000.
I don't have a number for you. Do you have anything, John? I don't have any.
So stand tech is estimating the cost of doing the more detailed concept plan is going to be somewhere between 10 and 15,000.
I thought I said 15,000 in there, yeah. So it's not, it's not a big deal money-wise, I mean, it's for, as far as these things go.
So then, I guess, maybe playing a little devil's advocate, probably not the best way to put that, but if the price is 10, 15,000 and it's not a, I mean, it wasn't substantial because it is, but you know...
Time is the bigger issue.
Right, and so if getting the more granular view of this area isn't a substantial amount more money or a larger amount of money than for me, it's worth it? Because I feel like the bubble doesn't really give as much as what we're looking for. And I think we're going to find ourselves, kind of to your point, David, in the same position of eventually we're going to need more than the bubble, right? I didn't hear you wrong, I don't want to mischaracterize what you said.
It seems to me, yes.
Trust me, they're not going to work that long for 15,000 bucks.
So I guess I'm in favor of the more granular view, not doing the bubble and getting a better idea of what's actually happening in this area. And again, for that amount of money, I think that we could spend it and we'd get the value back out of it.
Particularly since this is a unique area where we're having residential bump up, I guess, like, other areas are all industrial or they're all residential, but this is a weird where we're doing this switch over. And I feel like we need to be a little bit more intentional about how we put those buffers in, how we control traffic. Like, it's, it is a complex little spot. And it's also right by the highway, it is also, we're going to get more, but like I, to me, this is where, if we're going to splurge a little bit, so to speak, this is the spot to do it in.
I agree with you, Sarah.
And we might learn a lot of lessons from this that we can then apply in other places without necessarily having like, there's probably a lot we can learn here, we could use in other areas without necessarily having to go through a whole concept plan, but we'll be like, hey, I remember this and...
Yeah, I agree with you.
Apply it elsewhere.
I make a motion to approve a 90-day moratorium. We're not going to get much for 15 grand, there's no way it's going to take 16, or six months.
But wouldn't you rather have the extra time?
Because you can end it early.
Because we can end it, if it is 90 days, that's awesome. And then we can say, we didn't need six months, but...
Want to give, that's the direction to get it done. Otherwise, it'll just take five, why do I need to work on it next week? I've got 52 more weeks or 26, 26 more weeks, I don't know what the number is.
Okay.
My vote is six months with the concept plan.
So Scott did make a motion.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
My concern with, with the three-month timeline is that between us and the planning commission, we're usually the biggest delay in the whole process. And so...
Not us.
Well, maybe not you. And so three months feels real tight to me.
Can we ask for an update before the six months? Like, is there a way that we can say, we'd like to, that's what I mean.
Your council will be involved with this.
You'll be driving it.
And the whole process. So I guess maybe that will take care of the, you know, people sitting on their hands would be, I guess, what you think you're thinking, Scott? If we're part of the process, then we're kind of driving the bus of, we want to see this, and then we have that next meeting, right? I like nice timelines and give me this at this point, and I think we'll have that. So I'm...
At the speed of government.
I want six months, that's my...
Okay, so 90 days dies.
90 days dies.
So I make a motion for the moratorium for six months with the concept plan.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor, you need to hold the public hearing.
Oh.
Oh.
Before you act on...
This is why we have the attorney.
I will open up the public hearing at 7:34, does anybody want to come speak to this? Anybody online?
We got some...
Oh.
I guess I'm a naive or something, I don't quite understand that. We have property, I'm sorry.
Name and address, yeah. You can fill that out after.
Name is Selma Stern, I live on 17100 Territorial Road. As you will see, it is on the east side of the group. It's down on Territorial Road where the construction is, or the, oh, the townhouse is up. I'm wondering if your moratorium is going to affect the whole area or just the piece on, is it 113th North? Is this moratorium going to cover the whole section? Or why are we punished for their concern? I mean, we've got land, two pieces, and that three-corner piece.
Yep. Do you remember why we swung it there?
I'm wondering why we have to be, have the moratorium, the whole thing. I don't understand that. Why aren't you just putting the moratorium on the section that you want to be discussed?
So the moratorium is intended to include undeveloped land that could be developed within, say, the next year or so or...
Why are you, I don't understand, why are you putting moratorium on our section that's outside?
It's to try to figure out the road alignment before your land is developed. And I don't know your wishes for development, I have no idea.
I have no wishes to move.
Okay.
Unless they carry me out, but then you'll have to fight with my sons.
Certainly not in the next six months, right?
Not in the six months.
So it'll be over before it even affects you.
But why, I just understand, why do you have to do the moratorium for the whole section?
Well, yeah, what was the...
Why can't you just do the moratorium for the section you're talking about, 113th North?
Well, we are including your property also because it could be developed. And I understand your wishes is for it to not be developed, but we're including any land that's, that could be developed between, I'll say, the industrial area and East French Lake Road.
But is there, is there, I mean, really what we're talking about is, is from 113th up, right? And, and properties...
These are areas that are south of 113th.
Yeah, the properties that could be served by 113th, but where she's at and those lower properties, I guess I was kind of wondering that at planning commission, I didn't ask, but...
Yeah, why do you put a moratorium on ours?
Right.
We have, right now, no idea of selling it, but Ron might, the next party, and we do have a three-corner piece there that we would like to add to some of them. But I'm saying, why do we have to do the whole thing, moratorium? I haven't gotten a good answer yet.
Essentially, to have a better idea of the road layout. So we would...
What road layout?
The road layout through the whole moratorium area. So that would include your property if your property were to be developed. So this plan would develop, would create a concept plan of...
Aren't you more concerned about the development on 113th?
Along 113th and then 117th, but you're, you're...
Mine's south.
Sure, if your property were to be developed, it would, could be connected to these roads.
Well, we've got different opinions.
Well, I mean, that was the original road plan, was that that road does go through.
What road?
The light, light, light blue one, that right there? That was one of the, in the, in the master plan, or not master plan, the comprehensive plan. That there is a road through there, and so if we're changing, the road might go away from your land. Like, right now, in the plan, there is a road that goes through your land, and this plan may completely change that. So that would probably be valuable to know.
The road doesn't go through my land.
No, but it's planned to. Like, in the 2040 comprehensive plan, there is a road shown going through your land. And if we change everything, that road may go away, and there isn't a road planned to go through your land. So like, I, in my mind...
I'm lost.
Which is, the line on the map, it's an, it's an idea, it doesn't mean it's happening.
Yeah, but that whole point is, there are lots of ideas here, and some of them have clearly been made impossible and will never happen. And some are still a possibility and some are questions. And in my mind, part of this concept plan is to go back to this and say, what was originally put down on paper for 2040 is not going to happen, so what is the new plan? And so to me, it makes sense, because one of the other things is territorial road, as you mentioned. We've heard from people around you that that's really hard to get onto 81, right?
Well, I know that.
Exactly. But like, part of this plan would be looking at, is there a better way to route that traffic onto 81 than right there at that intersection? And part of this planning, this concept planning, is looking at that. And that's your house, right? I mean, it's your intersection. So that's, in my mind, why your land was included in this, not because anyone is saying that you have to build anything here or not, but since we're looking at the roadways and one of the big problem intersections feeding this area is literally right in front of your house, that hopefully will be looked at and may be addressed, and maybe we can get a better option for that intersection. So that's, in my mind, why your land was included. So I don't know if that, I wasn't the person who made the drawing, but in my mind, it made sense from that reason, from that perspective, is those roads have got to be looked at. And some of them go through, in the 2040 plan, are shown to go through your property. So if that's going to change, we got to, like, look at that property. Am I misunderstanding?
No, I'm just a little concerned that that kind of expands the scope that I thought we were at.
Okay.
But I...
I know if there's a situation on Territorial Road and 81, it has been for how many years?
Yeah, and it's only going to get worse, not better, which is why...
I do know that.
Yeah, which is why I think we should, like, take time now and see if we can fix it, instead of just letting it keep getting worse. And I'm not saying there is a fix, but this is our chance, I guess, in my mind. And maybe we can't fix it, but if we don't do anything, then we're not going to be able to.
We know it's like, at least a piece of it will slide over, so, okay.
And at the end of the day, it's six months and nothing will change for you. I mean, if you weren't planning to develop anything...
Well, not this particular land, what we live on.
Yeah.
But there's a three-corner piece that I'm sure we'd like to get rid of, but...
In the next six months?
Anytime you want to wait for it.
Okay. I am not made of money, so I will not be buying it, but...
That's just my situation.
I, yeah, and I totally, I get it, but that was my thought process when I saw why I wasn't concerned. I was like, oh yeah, no, we got to figure out that road.
Well, I think it's going to take more than six months to figure that road out. It's been happening for how many years?
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Uh, John, a question. The, the budget impact, is that your number, is that stand tech's number?
The 10 to 15,000, that is stand tech's.
Oh, cool.
So we do have money budgeted for studies like this.
No, I don't, I just don't want it to be a change order and the study's all of a sudden 30 grand.
Yeah, so the, if the council passes a moratorium and directs the more detailed studies, stand tech would propose a scope of services, and that would have the more detailed budget in it.
Does anybody else want to come forward and speak to this issue? Okay, so you had somebody online?
Uh, so we do have two different people, but Marsha, if you wanted to speak?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yep.
Oh, great. Hi, Marsha Grover, 11320 from Brooklyn. I just wanted to mention that I agree with both Sarah and Stephanie that you should go for the six-month moratorium. It doesn't mean you have to use the whole six months. You can only use three months if you can get by with that, but six months is the way to do it right, because you only get one chance to do this road right. And when they start developing over there, the roads are going to be there no matter what. So they have to be in the right spot. So take your time and do it right. Thanks.
Hey, Marsha, I thought we were going to miss you tonight, thanks for showing up.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I muted her. And then Anna, if you want to ask your question, I just need your name and address.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
It's Anna and Andrew Babcock here. We are at 16124 116th Avenue North. We are in the Brayburn Trails neighborhood, and our backyard looks at the five parcels that are east of East French Lake Road. And we, I know we've emailed council and the mayor before this, about this before. So my clarifying question tonight is, during this process, can those five parcels be rezoned or is that only something that can happen during a comprehensive master plan change?
So the, the moratorium is specific to prohibiting subdivisions. Typically subdivisions would also include rezonings.
I have a feeling she meant guided use. Did you mean what the plan is for the property?
Well, like currently, those five parcels, you can see it goes from red to orange to yellow, and behind all of those properties is a... And behind all of those properties is a wetland area with a lot of wildlife and nature that call that area their home. So, you know, if during this process, those can be looked at to be rezoned to a low-density residential, as it is, single-family homes currently on those properties and looking at those properties, that was just something I wanted the council to consider.
Yeah, Anna means re-guided for land use.
Yep, and that would be land use, so it would not be done during this thing, right?
Well, no, land use and, essentially, we're looking at land use and road alignment. So that would include the homes that are on the east side of East French Lake Road.
The council would look at, possibly looking at re-land using those properties as well.
It was the highest investment.
On the east side.
Okay.
Can you show me the moratorium area again?
Sure.
As you can see, it's just to the east of East French Lake Road, and it crosses right at the corner.
Okay, so this is, okay. So it sounds like we would be looking at that land use. And when we concluded it, it would go for an amendment? Or would it just get stashed for?
Depends on what the council comes up with at the end of this study.
We could also use it as an addendum, possibly to the concept plan, as an addendum process and be submitted to.
Did that answer your question?
Sorry, I muted her.
Oh. Okay. Anybody else? Come on forward. Name and address.
Naomi Brettz, one six seven seven zero, one hundred and twelfth Avenue North.
Can you repeat, can you repeat that one more time, just because it's in front of the mic?
One six seven seven zero, one hundred and twelfth Avenue North. Naomi Brettz. I live in Territorial Trail, where, sort of where the Stearns live. When can our neighborhood, or can we, if the road does go through their property near us, eighty-one to Territorial, when can we come and say we don't want that? Will that be open to us to say that that's not a road we want to go through? Or is that not up to us as a community?
It's always up to, yeah.
When, I mean, when would be, we be notified of that?
I guess I'm not sure what the process is yet for what we would be doing.
No, we'll have to figure that out. So the initial, I would say you're going to want to pay attention to this process of what, what comes out of the concept plan. So it'd be up to the council on how much input you want from the public. But still, like, this, the end result is going to be the city's plan of what they would like to see. A developer might come in and say, they can't do what the city's plan is, they have to do something differently. Through the development process, that's a public hearing, that would be your opportunity to voice concerns on the street access. But, you know, as the previous ones, Leonard said, they have no interest in developing.
Right.
So it, you know, whether it's a year from now or a hundred years from now.
But we know how things happen, so we just want to make sure that we're prepared and we know what's going on.
So, yeah, so there, there's an official process, but I guess what I would advise you to do is watch the agenda items for both the Planning Commission and work sessions and us. And when you see something on that that interests you.
Because we got a mailing, so we won't get a mailing again. We just now need to be aware of what's going on.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, yep, just keep your eye open and let people know, let the commissions know and us.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, you probably should.
If I could, people who are interested in receiving notices can sign up. Even if there's not an official notice process going out, there is a way for interested residents to notify the city that they want to be notified, and then, as part of the process, the city is obligated to notify them.
Through email or phone calls, I guess, or?
Correct.
Do we keep, like, a list or something?
We have never had it before, so if that's the process, then yes. We would have to make a list.
We typically just have people request to be on the council packet distribution list for emails, and then they look at the agenda, or, I mean, we can do a completely separate one as well. We just don't have a list starting.
Anybody else want to speak to this issue? Okay, now we'll close the public hearing. All right, so we were.
There was a motion and a second before the public hearing was opened.
Yes.
Do we need to redo that?
I don't believe so.
No, I think we're good. So, yeah. Sarah had a motion.
Six months with the concept plan.
Six months with the concept plan. Stephanie seconded it. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go ahead.
Thanks.
Get it done.
All those opposed, say no. Passes five to zero. All right.
Thank you.
We are on to item I, new business.
That was the main thing.
Mayor and council, before you tonight is the Arbor Day proclamation. This is part of an initiative that the Park Commission identified to become a national, nationally-recognized environmentally-aware city as part of the Tree City USA program. This was subsequently discussed at the joint meeting between the Park Commission and the City Council. We are currently, we currently have three of the four core standards in place. We have a tree board or department, as we have an arborist now. We did the tree ordinance this evening. We started the, we've got the budget thing under control because we spend more than that, the two dollars a head on equipment and labor. And then the last part is this proclamation, and we're required. So the recommendation is to issue the Arbor Day proclamation. I'm not sure what that all entails, Mayor, if you need to read it.
I'm guessing I need to read it.
Like you're doing a proclamation. Read it like you mean it. Yeah.
There's a reason why we usually don't allow these.
Do we need to edit it after you get done?
I'm going to find it. Oh, no. I got to read the whole thing?
We really want to hear your voice.
Yeah. Boy, this is where Senate closed meetings. All right. Well, first off, before I read this thing, are we approving this?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Whereas, we're going to have plenty of those. Whereas, in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture set aside a special day for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating, equally cause, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, countless other wood products, whereas trees in the community increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. I have to read the rest. Oh, jeez. Now, therefore, I, Dennis Fisher, Mayor of the City of Dayton, do hereby proclaim April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, as Arbor Day in the City of Dayton, and I urge all residents to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations dated twenty-second day of April, twenty twenty-five. Thank you. So now we'll revert to our role of not doing these. Okay. We still have to vote this in, right? Or is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, Scott.
You already proclaimed it. Yeah.
Well.
That's over then.
Scott motioned, I'll second.
Any discussion?
Your discussion is good.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right, we are proclaimed. Okay, now on to item J, LC Stevens Amphitheater Park construction discussion.
Yep. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This has been some conversation back and forth. I just want to provide a little bit of information. The PowerPoint provides just a snapshot of information is what happened. The amphitheater portion of LC Stevens Park has been a topic of discussion over the last few months, and the council has options of what they'd like to do with that amphitheater portion. They can bid out the amphitheater structure, which is shown to the right, doesn't mean that's the exact structure, that's just a general example, which includes all installation, prep work, and concrete work needed. They can quote out each individual item needed for prep, for work, which includes the structure, installation, the prep work, and the concrete. They can keep what is there and wait until the master plan is completed by MSA before moving forward, or a combination of the above. It should be noted, just to make sure that the council's aware, that this needs to be done through the DNR as well because that structure is essentially in a floodway, and you can't impede floodwaters in a floodway. So I'm assuming that this type of structure will be sufficient for the DNR, but I am not for sure because I am not a DNR rep. So I just want to make sure the council's aware of this. So what I need to know is direction on what the council would like to do with this amphitheater item within LC Stevens Park. That's part one.
So I feel like two weeks ago, we said everything in LC Stevens was on hold until the master plan was done. So I don't understand why this is here.
There, I think the reason, Scott, you can chime in. Last year, this was on the plan. It wasn't looking like this. It was looking like a bunch of sales. Literally, sales. This, I don't think, I can't imagine it's going to be affected by any changes to the plan because it's over the, the concrete pad we have out there.
But I mean, part of the master plan is, there's a design aspect to it, that it looks like a complete park with a, like, there's going to be, it's not just physical things, it's how they look together, and it's a cohesive whole that looks pretty and attractive, particularly if this is going to be like, if we're going to have the water trail here, and this is going to be like a destination park for people outside of the city to come to. I want it to be gorgeous. I want it to be a showstopper, and I want it to look like a cohesive whole and not like we did, like, we put together little bits and pieces as we could afford it. That's not, to me, a showstopper park that we spent how much money on getting a master plan to do? I just, those two.
This one or the first one or the?
Well, I mean, LC Stevens in general, like, my, if we, if we're dropping the cash to have people do a really solid plan that's going to give us a showstopper park that people will come to our city to use, then why on earth would we do this? It just does not make sense to me.
I'm going to go first, second, third, whatever it is. Part of the deal is, is to me, we were looking at a plan two weeks ago that staff was all in favor of doing. They recommended to go ahead and approve it. And now, all of a sudden, first off, with that plan, at that time, I don't know that the Park Commission knew that MSA was going to put a twenty-four by thirty-four picnic shelter included in their plan, and they were improving another picnic shelter. Secondly, the, there really wasn't, to me, there wasn't a lot of value in that plan. It was four hundred grand for a picnic shelter and a parking lot that nobody could tell me how big was. He couldn't tell me how many stalls or how many square feet of concrete were there. It was not in any information that we were given. And I asked the question, how big is the parking lot? And he couldn't answer it. So to me, that four hundred thousand dollars, there was zero value to the whole thing. I personally don't like the, to me, the whole plan was bad. I don't like the parking lot in the middle of the park. To me, it should be along the roadway, kind of right where that barn is. I mean, you can have a nice-sized parking lot, almost as big as this one out in Center Park, Central Park, in that location. The other deal that I struggle with is, we need something over, it was probably a year ago, and, I mean, obviously, you weren't here and you didn't hear, and Paul, the guy that has been doing all the work on that park, definitely said, this is the picture-perfect location for an amphitheater because you're out looking over the river. I mean, and realistically, it is the perfect location. We spent probably, I think it's four, five hundred grand on that particular, what we have there right now. So, and two weeks ago, MSA was going to be instructed, if we'd approved that plan two weeks ago, MSA was going to be instructed to build their plan around that plan. So all we have to do is tell MSA, this is where the amphitheater is going to be. And then they can design the rest of the park. Now, I have some other ideas also, not that I'm a park guy, but, I mean, we've been beating this thing to death for two years, and we're still nowhere. And now, to me, this particular, whatever structure we build, the one that's in your packet is four months up. In other words, if we ordered it today, we won't get it until, like, October. Now, that means we could technically have it up sometime October, November, so that it would be ready next year. Because if we don't do anything now in twenty twenty-five, we won't have this in twenty twenty-six either. It just takes that long.
You're concerned the look and feel of it?
Yeah. I mean, why, I want a cohesive park, and if we build this and we insist MSA build around it, well, now we've just hamstrung their design process. They, like, it just does not make sense to me. It'd be like if I built my barn before I built my house, and then my barn dictated everything I had to do with my house. Like, it feels backwards to me. I appreciate, and I, again, I wasn't here, so I have not been watching this clock tick down, and I haven't been feeling the frustration that nothing is moving. But coming in as an outsider, it feels like you're doing it just for the sake of doing it, and that, to me, doesn't make any sense.
I'm not doing it for the sake of doing it. We need some sort of a cover over that entertainment center because the four or five events that are going to happen this year, one of them's going to get rained out, probably. Not to say that anybody would come and watch it in the rain anyway.
So, just to make sure I'm understanding you correctly, so correct me if I'm wrong. What I'm hearing you say is that you're not concerned that MSA would put the amphitheater, this or a structure somewhere else? That this is the spot that's going to be there no matter what? If they're going to have maybe a different aesthetic, but that it's going to be there no matter what the plan, in your opinion, no matter the plan comes out, it's going to be there?
We didn't spend a half a million bucks to put what we have there now to move it.
Correct. But when I, okay, so I'm hearing you correctly.
And, and if staff was going to direct MSA to work around what Paul had designed, you just simply say, you guys build around this. This is our, this is our deal. You build the rest of it around it.
Right. I think that maybe that's where I get a little stuck. It's a little sticky for me because if we're having them do a master plan, and we've said, here's the park, you plan it, and then we're coming in after and saying, put this here, and we, like, and actually, it's only one thing, like, understanding that. But if we're coming in after and saying, plan around this, we've already given them, like, their direction, and now we're coming in and changing it, but I guess I'm, like.
Well, we just spent four hundred or two hundred grand on a bridge that wasn't in anybody's plan, and they're going to plan around that.
I think as far as the, where this is at, I don't know that we're, that we would even necessarily have to say, plan around this. They're going to see what's there, they're going to look at it, and I would be extremely surprised if they looked at it and said, this amphitheater is in the wrong spot.
That, that's kind of where, what I'm getting at, is that. I think I'm torn, right? Because I see Sarah's point of, like.
The look.
The look and one cohesive design, right? I don't like the, here's the puzzle, I've already put a piece in the center, and then you got to figure it out around it. But if it's already going to be there no matter what, are we really talking more about the structure, what the structure looks like itself? Is that the issue? Because if it's going to be there no matter what, they'll plan the park around all of it. It's like I'm circling the drain here, and I apologize. Okay.
I think the concern might be it's the look.
It's the look. I mean, you're going to put something out, it's going to look a certain way, and you're going to either have a Frankenstein-looking park, or you're going to basically hamstring MSA's design process.
Well, we can't have sides, sides on it. We already know that.
Well, but even material choices, right?
Like, all the choices.
You can choose something that's, this is a drastic example, but something that's more like industrial feeling, or you can choose something that has more natural, and so, like, it may not fit in with what MSA has in their vision of what materials or how that would all come together.
You just said the other one that was in there was all sales, and you hated it. So like, clearly, you guys care about the design and what it looks like.
It was a tarp, it was a tarp for the roof. It was a tarp, it was a tarp for the roof.
My, yeah, my hatred for it was simply it doesn't do anything.
Wasn't it design aesthetic, it was the-
It was the, it was there, it was the, it was the material.
I, I understand what you're saying.
I think the challenge is that, you know, nobody's getting a clean sheet of paper on this thing. I mean, MSA's not. And so they're picking up a design, you know, kinda in the middle, and let's say we were unsatisfied, at least for sure with the pace, but I think also, kind of the overall concept of the master plan that's in play now, or was in play. And so where do you, where do you kinda draw that line? I don't, you know, I'm not a designer. I think we want an amphitheater there, I think, you know, the, the river location looks good to my eyes, but that's not what I do for a living. And so I, it's harder for me to weigh in on the, kinda the design elements piece of it. But I certainly share the frustration that we've gone two years with no progress on this park, and it, you know, what can we do to move this along? Probably the bigger concern for me was in, in the packet, and about how we go about approving this when we took it out of another bid pack, and, and the legal aspects of, well, just the nuances of it, because if we would've accepted the package as a whole, it would've been a different contractor. We took pieces out, that kinda flipped the numbers, and so we chose this contractor, it would be, you know, I think, at least unethical to then say, "Oh, well, now you can have all this stuff back," and you're the guy-
But we didn't pull this out.
Yeah, I, so I think it has to, and maybe we're not to that point yet, but if we're gonna do it, then I think we have to follow a clean process to get it built.
As far as bidding out again, and all that?
Well, I don't know what's required, but I, I know what I read in the packet raises some significant cautions about just, us just handing work out.
Well, depending on how you do it, I mean, I think, now, correct me if I'm wrong, the kit, we don't have to go out for a bid for the kit. I mean, that unit, this unit, now, I'm not saying it has to be this one, it could be that one. This one is 100 to 125,000 bucks, shipped right to Stevens Park.
So, yeah, so, yeah, so that's, that's why I was giving the option to the council there.
Right, so if you break it all out.
Yeah, so customer fashion, to your point, that's the second part of the conversation, so you're one slide ahead of me for your comments about the legality and that ethical process and stuff, so you're one step ahead of me. This amphitheater was not part of any of the alternates or anything like that, so it's a totally standalone project. I've heard a lot of comments about the amphitheater, that's why I wanna figure out if it's something we wanna do as a standalone project this year, or is it something we wanna wait for? That's why, that's kinda the main comments from, from my level at staff. And if you want to do the amphitheater this year, that's fine, we just need to know how to do it. So there's two different processes. We can either group them all together and say it's one giant bid, you go out and you find a contractor who can order that exact kit, who can then put all the concrete together, do all the prep work, and do all the installation, and it's one kit. Our guess at staff level is gonna be, it's gonna be more than 175, which is why we say you could bid it as one giant project, similar to what you do in the parks. You could do the other option where you say, "We're gonna quote it out." So essentially, if it's over $25,000 worth of work, you have to get more than one quote. That will be clued, if you wanted to do that one item, you still have to get another quote from another contractor of, "Provide me this," you just give them the plan, "I want this," and they have to give you a number for it. If they can come in lower, fantastic, that's wonderful. But then you piece it out, you go, "Okay, I wanna do the, this structure from this company, I wanna have this company do the concrete work, I wanna have this company..." So you, essentially, you end up, and the city ends up being that general contractor, and we end up getting bids for each individual item. So you quote it out, that's, so there's two different processes you can do to get it in, if you'd like to put it in this year. Or the other option is wait till the MSA master plan is done. You can then do it as a standalone project at that point too, if you'd like, or you can do it as part of one big bid package, similar to what you saw in an alternate. Customer fashion, your points are related to, can we add other things that we are already in alternates before, other meetings, at previous meetings that you already approved? That's the second half of the question of, just letting you guys know that we can't do, likely, what the contractor's asking us to do, because it's gonna change the bidder, it's gonna change who, who the contractor is. We're now, we're now giving artificial numbers, because all the contractor knows what other contractor numbers are, so it's not a fair process anymore, now we've taken the bid process out of it, so that's the second half of the po, of the, of the comments, but this amphitheater was not in any of the bids at all, so it's kind of a standalone project, I would say, at this moment.
To me, we could, we would go out individually, bid each item. The building, we have a local guy that can put it up, we have a local guy that does cement. I'm sure there's an electrician somewhere in this city that we could have, hook up the lights and power to the show. To me, we'd just go out and get to all of those bids, and each one of them is a separate item.
Can I ask one question, please? When we were looking at this, Scott, earlier, part of the idea was that we were gonna expand the performance area as well, is that still gonna be part of this project? So you, you had a bigger area for the band to perform?
Make the stage bigger?
Yeah, 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 I would, I mean, I personally, I would, and my measurements, and I'm not a concrete guy, but I think I'm pretty close, because you can Google everything. You would add 50 yards of concrete to this whole thing. To me, you'd put a little, a dance thing out in front of what we have out there now. Now, the topography of the ground is not real favorable, because it's all sloping towards the river. If I was doing it, or if it was, I would raise the stage maybe a foot, and that allows you to get a flat, probably 12 by 30 dance area, little area in front, and then extend the back of it, because there is some room between the, the, the back of the stage now and the path, the trail that's back there. Now, you are gonna have, right now, there's about a two-foot drop on the back of the stage, and I don't know if that's solid concrete, the whole thing, I'm not sure.
I know it is.
But you could build a, you could build a retaining wall and not pour, otherwise, you're gonna be pouring a 30-foot by 10-foot block of concrete.
So what I'm hearing here, Scott, is there's a lot more to just pouring concrete. I think that we'd have to get some engineering done, and there's probably gonna be some civil engineering with the additional concrete down there by the river.
Why do you need all that?
You can't just pour concrete and be like, "It's gonna be fine." It's just not how it works. I mean-
It's no different than what we have there now.
Well, it's, it's additional impervious area, that's the problem.
When is the MSA study supposed to be done?
Second, October, November.
Sorry, what was that? I think it's, I think it's roughly planned for the end of the year. MSA study's supposed to be done-
Yeah, it'll be the end of the year, I think the-
Is it in December?
I think it's December.
So, I guess what I'm, I'm wondering is, so, this, whatever this is, this work's not gonna get done this year anyways.
You wouldn't do, I mean, as soon as you could get it done, it'd be October, because you're not gonna have the unit until then.
Right.
But then it would be ready. The issue that, the main problem you have is if you wait till next spring, you better have the unit in stock by then, or have it, have it shipped to you by then, because it, otherwise, it's gonna cut into your June, I mean, I think staff is trying to get a music in the park thing going.
We're open this year.
Yeah, I know. So all of a sudden, if you're gonna build this next May, you're screwing up June and July for any events going on.
So you're saying, this, if we go with this specific thing, it's got a four-month late time?
Correct.
So we could still wait until MSA did their work?
Yeah.
And-
But you gotta order the unit.
But you, it might not be this unit, because this might not fit with the aesthetic that the whole park is. We don't just get the cheapest thing, because it's the cheapest thing, we want the best thing for the park.
Well, I'm not saying that it's, that's not cheap.
I have another-
I'm sorry.
And if you wait, then you're four months from whenever you decide.
Yes.
So, MSA is working on this today, we've commissioned them to do this work. Can't we ask them to focus on this piece first, and pull that, I mean, ultimately carve that out of the, the master plan?
I think, yeah, that's definitely what we could do. I mean, the ideas part that, you know, you're gonna be sitting on, Scott, in the middle of May, is one of the, one of the opportunities to focus on what is the important things for this, for this group. There is gonna be a lot of public input into this as well, which I think is pretty important, as it's such a big park for the city, and so we will be directed by those guys, but that's not to, you know, if that's what everybody wants, then we can definitely focus on this. The idea would be to have bid documentation for everything ready for February, March next year, to get it out to bid. So whatever the process brings us to, then that's what we will certainly do.
I'm not a fan of, but putting it out for a bid, because it's going to cost you 20, 30% more. I mean, this can be something that can be done on our own.
But this could be part of a lot more projects going on in the park.
Exactly, that's, so now, all of a sudden, we're talking a million, it's 20 grand.
Part of the problem I have with that process is, as I see it, it limits who we get bid on these, on this work. Because the only people that can bid on these things is somebody that can do everything, pavement, concrete, buildings, but everything else.
Yeah, well, they, the general contractor, just subcontracts are out, and I know that they, they use a lot of local companies as well. I know the company that we put out for the trees, they got a bid from a local company to do those. So it does come to the local people here, you know, who put in a bid for it. The, the thing is, they just gotta put the bid in.
I mean, I guess-
I just, I, yeah, I just have a problem, because let's say this costs us 200 to put up, the, it's not, this, no.
It's gonna be 300 from the contractor.
Yeah, I-
I hear you there, but doesn't it walk a fine line of, like, if you're having, okay, how do I say this? The concrete work, the dirt work, the amphitheater, like, the actual structure, it's all one project, one thing? Yes, so I guess where I-
But if you lump it into the rest, it's not-
Agreed with you. So like, those, like, smaller little projects make sense that you would kind of break them out, like, this, this is one project. But where I think I get, it feels a little sticky, is when you start saying things like, "Oh, and then we'll say this local concrete guy's gonna do this, because it's underneath a certain dollar amount, and we don't have to go out for bid for it." And then this is underneath a certain dollar amount, so it feels sticky to me to then characterize it that way, where it-
I understand what you're saying.
It feels like you're doing favors.
It, it, yeah, in some sense, yes, and it feels sticky, where it's like, the amphitheater, this maybe geographic area is one project, and then it would kind of eliminate some of what you're saying, Dennis, of the jackup of the price, because only the larger companies can do those things. But I just caution how granular we get with that, because if we're ordering an amphitheater and then having, you know, somebody come and do this concrete, they're doing these pieces, it just, I think, puts the city in a, I don't know, sticky situation.
Compromise.
Yeah, and, and a position where I don't know that we wanna be.
Well, and I think the other thing is, someone is going to be the general contractor, and the city is going to pay that. When you get a bid, it's clear what that costs. When you do these onesy-twosey things, you're making the city, and by the city, it's not us, you're making the staff be the general contractor, which is taking their time away from their other jobs. So, and it's harder to put a dollar amount on that, but that work still has to get done by somebody, and now what you're doing is you're putting all that work onto staff, and then they can't do their other things that we are paying them and would like them to do. So I think it's, I don't think it is appropriate to pretend that all of that padding for the general contractor is nothing but padding, when there is, like, the city's still paying it, we're gonna be paying it to Marty instead by having him have to do this and not other work, that will either get delayed, or postponed, or put into other people, but I, I think that is not, it's not you doing it, Scott, it's the staff, and they get paid for it.
When you say padding, here's a padding situation right here, on the last thing, the last deal that we just approved. I was specifically told that we could not take picnic tables, benches, grills, trashcans out of the bid. One way or another, I ended up calling, talking to the contractor, he actually called me, and he has no problem taking them out. Why would you not want to? He says, "You're gonna save 6, 50, 60% on a trashcan that in the bid was $3,500, it cost 729 bucks. That's padding, but it's on the wrong way." Now, if it's okay, if you have no issue with the public spending a couple thousand dollars more, I do. I, I treat it like it's my money. Most of the time, we don't treat it like it's our money, because we just shake the tree to give more.
I think sometimes, though, you can, you know, jump over the dollar to get to the dime. Like, my point is, there is, it is still the city's money, it's just, it's, it's less visible, but the city is still paying that cost, it is just not a line item on a bid, it is in other, less tangible ways.
I understand what you're saying. I think my bigger concern is, is that when we put these into these, these huge mega packages, we only get a handful of bids, because, and they all know it.
And that's fair, that's fair.
So, that, that's my issue. If we could break these things up, and I'm not talking about hiding the cost, or having, you know, Marty suddenly have a, you know, 40 hours a week extra to do some of these things. It's, I, I think they're, they're, for, for some of the numbers I've seen, I think we could almost hire a contractor for this, and just say, "Go do this." But, I mean, assuming the bidding process is followed, but-
Yeah, I still don't, I'm not quite following, because I, I agree, when we get to the, "Here's the master plan, we need, we need bids on this," and then we only get, I don't know if they're bigger players, but people that, you know, have the resources to pull together all of the elements of, of the construction. What we did a lot on bigger projects was to bust things out into bid packs. You know, you, you put out a bid pack early for the dirt work, and then you put out another bid pack, and these are going to different people, they're not all going to the same group. I mean, in the public, anybody that wants a bid can bid, but that was my point earlier, Marty, Marty, is could they, you know, they have to have some concept of what the overall is gonna look like, enough to say, "This is where the amphitheater's gonna go." Either it's going where it is, or it's, or it's gotta move. But I think that's an early decision for them, and they could focus on the design for that, and it could be released as a part of this overall package, but it's, you know, as a separate bid pack and not the whole thing, and that might draw the, the local contestants into the mix, because it's a limited scope of work. And that, I guess that's what I, I think we ought to try to go for.
I, I think that that is perfectly doable, I don't think that's a problem with that kind of thing, with one-off structures like this, where you're doing maybe parking lots and stuff, there may be an economy, a scale, with running parking lots with trails and stuff like that, so I think, you know, the one-off thing like this is certainly doable. We can break it off in that way.
Yeah, I have no problem if you get two or three guys that are gonna bid the concrete, not done by, I have no problem with it. I would like to try to use local, if we can.
If we can, but, yep. So, you're in this, you're in this group, you can push and get this part figured out early.
ASAP, and get a bid pack.
Yep, so my kind of questions for the mayor and the council is that, at this point, we're gonna go with option, I'm gonna go with the third bullet point, which is keep what is there for now, wait until the master plan has some process moving forward, that's what I'm hearing. And that's saying that we can't stop at that point and go, "Hey, this is what we want," and we can then pull the amphitheater out as item A, and we could do a bid pack for that process, whether that's the city running the bid pack, or that's, we bid it out in total, that'll be up to the council at that time, but that's what I'm hearing right now, I just wanna make sure I have clear direction from the council.
I like that. I agree.
Two.
So what you're saying is, is we start the MSA-
I agree, because I said it.
And have them, have them get going on this.
Yeah, so-
I can wait two or three or four weeks.
Yep.
We've been waiting for two years.
Yeah, so, in summary, was that, use option item three currently, just to keep what's there for now, let it sit, wait till the master plan process has been started by MSA, have them work and focus on the amphitheater portion first, as part of their overall designed requirements and what they're looking at and doing. They can then, once they've say, "Yep, we're good to go with that part," I'm gonna say, "Bless it." They will then bring that to council and say, "This is going to be part of the greater design, but this is something that you can do right now, it's a one-off project, whether that's ordering parts, whether that's getting stuff installed." I don't know what they're gonna come back with the design. They might have, instead of metal, they might have concrete beams. They might come back and say, "No, it should be a giant wood oak tree," I don't know, I'm just using general things here, but that would be the idea from what I'm hearing from the council. And then we, then we could still bid that out this year, whether that's with quotes, as in individual items, or we could do it as one big bid package, so.
Have they done anything yet? You guys talked to them today?
Um, I think we talked to them, I mean, they're starting the process.
Yeah, they started the process, they, they've been doing site reviews, they've got all Yeah, they started the process, they, they've been doing site reviews, they've got all the plans and stuff on GIS, so they're starting to pull all that background stuff together now.
Yep, so it'll be in May, when, I mean, it'll be early, like I said, the idea would be to try to get this thing. The idea would be hopefully have something by June to council, here's some general direction we're getting from that. Again, it's gonna take some little bit of time to make sure that everyone's on the same page of what they want. For the steering committee, it's gonna take a little bit.
You good?
I'll speed them along.
Yep.
Okay. Second half of the conversation was related to what customer fashion had kind of alluded to, which is how do we get to the spot we're at? We can't renegotiate or add things to the contract related to LC Stevens Park because we've already set a spot, or set a bid already aside. We can adjust that bid, so if we wanna take out things related to P, um, Park Affirmment Project 2024 related to PSA 21 or Ione Gardens Cypress Cove Park that we both approved on, we can then work with the contractors, that's something the council would like to do. Let it open the contract with trashcans, benches, what have you with those two parks. We just cannot add anything to that already approved bid because that would go against bid rules. And it also, I would say, would be an unethical process for the city because now we have, what did I say?
Well, yeah, it's such a precedent, like you come in as a low bid, get it, and then you can.
And then we can add a bunch of stuff afterwards to the process. So we can adjust things on those two parks, if the council would like to do, but we can't add anything to LC Stevens. If you'd like to do LC Stevens this year and you think that the contractor would like to do that, we can most certainly re-go out for bid again if we'd like to do that as a total thing. But then we just take out the things that you don't wanna do, garbage cans, benches, whatever. But again, we have to go through a whole nother bid process to do that, to be able to select the contractor. Now, it might end up being the same contractor, but then it needs to go through the same process. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't wanna revisit the, I personally didn't like the plan that was there for LC Stevens. I don't want nothing to do with that plan.
Well, now is your chance to change it, because you're gonna be on the group.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, so does anybody, does anyone on the council want to adjust anything on the bid that we approved a meeting ago, which would be like taking out garbage cans and benches and whatever, related to the two parks that we approved, which would be Ione Gardens, Cypress Cove, and then the PSA 21, Braver and Trails, Sundance Greens Park.
Ideal is all, just the equipment part, picnic tables, all of that, we can do that on our own. And like I said, if, if Marty can't set them down, I'll get some residents that'll volunteer.
Got one.
What specific items? I heard picnic tables and garbage cans.
Well, it's just all the, I don't know what you call them, what do you call them? Huh?
What were you saying?
Garbage cans, picnic tables, the grills. Uh.
I don't know if those benches, I don't know if those are movable.
There was a couple of benches in there.
Yeah.
All of those things are.
All the park furniture.
Park furniture, whatever you call it. I mean, I know for a fact we can save about 15 grand by doing it ourselves. And, and I forgot his name, Jeff, was Jeff, right?
Yep.
Jeff has no problem with it.
With using a different product or us supplying them?
We go online and buy them, I mean, it's a park, the park supply place that sells them, all you gotta do is Google park supplies, it's simple.
So can, can this be changed in this context to be that for that specific kind of equipment owner supplied and contractor installed?
I don't know if that would work, I mean, they.
It's a change, but it's not, that's not, I'm not.
Depends on what the contractor, so any sort of renegotiation we can do, and that's item number three on the list there, we can go back and renegotiate the contract. Say, hey, we're gonna provide these for you, you install them, and that's fine to do. The contractor doesn't technically have to accept that process, they could say, no, I'm not doing that. Or they could say, yep, now that you have, we asked you to do that, now the contract, now the contract opened back up, I'm gonna increase this price by 10 grand for something else. Because I got a new bid for a lot of cool work that I didn't know before. So, right now, we have a set contract, this is what it is, and that's what we can do. If you start opening the contract of, we take this whole thing out, now we have opened the whole contract, whether that's one item or, you know, 50 items, you now open a contract back up that they can then renegotiate the price with us.
The 15 you save on one area, you could come back and say, this is gonna cost more money.
Yep, yeah, you know, you saved 15,000 on perk furniture, but now I just got a new call from my concrete guy, concrete went up since the last time I talked to him. Now we're open by 10 grand, that's gotta go up by 10 grand, order it off of the cost.
But he's not gonna do that on these, on these park equipment supplies, you know, he already told me he wouldn't, you know? And why would we have him set them down?
Well, so to pull these out, we still, it's still an opening.
It opens the whole contract when you pull one item out.
Yeah, it will.
Yep.
I mean, you're gonna have a conversation with this Jeff, I mean, staff is going to, obviously, and just gonna say, hey, we can take these out. You told the councilman that you already said you wouldn't, you'd be okay with it?
Yep.
That's the only piece I'm looking at, I mean, it's the only piece I'm looking at getting out of there.
But if we pull, so what was the total thing, 900 and?
951.
Yeah, 951, something, that's all right.
951, if we pull the 15 grand out.
It's 20, but I mean, we're gonna spend 2,300 to buy it ourselves.
Yep.
Okay, so, right, it's 15, but.
You could.
Yeah.
Request at that point.
He's not going to. I mean, it's a, just phone call, just do it.
Yep, like I said, as soon as I ask him to do that and he says, yes, that sounds good, now the contract is now open again, now we can say, yep, but then this has to be added on this side, so.
Then all of a sudden, he's gonna say, well, just leave it, we'll eat it, lesson learned. My, my adage on the deal is, those simple things like that, they should never be in that bid to begin with.
See, I, I could maybe buy into that, I'm a little bit hesitant.
In the future, we can most certainly do that, that's something the council could do. Future, I'm good with that, but if you open the contract up and any sort of negotiation, then we have to then go with the process and I have to come to a renegotiation again. So I could say, yes, we're gonna take all that park furniture out, and then he says, no, I'm gonna raise my concrete 10 grand, and I always say, oh, no, just put the furniture back in. And he's gonna go, no, my concrete just went up 10 grand, thank you very much. So now we're paying 961 because the contract is now open, you have to come to a new agreement again, because we already came to an agreement at one point. So, I'm not saying he would do that, I'm just saying that he is now at the ability.
Could I ask a question? It's a hypothetical question. If that did happen, but then his bid was higher than.
He might lose the whole contract.
One of the other bids, is, is that true?
He knows what it's, he knows, he knows how much.
But he knows how much the other ones are, so he could be like, it's a dollar less, and it's still him.
You got it.
Not saying that he would, but again, not like trying to say anything about like this particular company or person, but that could happen, right?
Yep.
You know how I'd handle that? I'd call the other guy and, John, you have to be $10 cheaper than this guy. That's how I'd handle it, it's business.
You can't have a forever bid process open, right? Like, you have to pull the trigger on something.
You aren't, with that process, Scott, as a government entity, we cannot do that, that is not a legal bidding process, we cannot do that.
Right.
As a, as a, personally, you and I, as a resident or a, yeah, you can do that all day long, you can take this guy's court to go to this guy's court, oh yeah, for sure. But as a government entity, we don't, we cannot do that. Yeah, we have rules and laws and state statutes, we can't, we cannot legally do that, and I would have guessed that, and you would have testified.
For us, lesson learned.
Yes, yes.
But I don't know that I wanna reopen this contract, because I don't know this guy, you might trust this guy.
I trust it.
I, but.
I think it just sets a bad precedent, and I don't think that's something that we should get in the habit of doing. I think lesson learned, in the future, no park furniture in the bids, we'll do that ourselves, we learned the lesson, let's remember it. But I don't, I don't like the precedent of giving a bid and then going back in and try to like massaging it after the fact. And I, I'm not comfortable with that.
Remember, he has the same information we do, so he knows exactly what the other bid was and exactly what the $100 was, so. That's the one process with the public bid process, that once you have it open, everyone knows what the other one person bid, so.
Yeah.
They knew all the numbers before they bid.
Well, it seems like.
It's advertised.
Oh, it's a, it's a estimate.
To suspect this contractor of any funny business, but I think we, we sort of shot ourselves in the foot, you know, by not having this conversation a bit earlier. I think that this kind of stuff, because it's, it comes up in every park, right, that we're overpaying for a lot of this kind of stuff. We should be specing what we want in the parks, have everybody put it in their bid, right? And not just pick something out of the catalog and say, these are nicer. I don't know how these things are, are getting, you know, bid or how they're, if it's the designer that's choosing the, these pieces or, or what.
Typically, it's the, yeah, the landscape architect that's choosing the things.
So they're, they're bidding what we tell them we want, and we should get, well, I guess we gotta be better at telling them what we want. That, you know, that there are things where we feel we can save money on, and trashcans comes up every time we talk about a park, so that'd be one of them. You know, we find the trashcan that Marty's happy with and looks nice in, nice in the design, that's what we tell them they gotta buy. And when, you know, when the designers come up with something that's gold plated, then we gotta tell them to knock it off.
I think we could handle it the same way that we do with our detailed plates for engineering, we'll have the spec of the piece of, you know, equipment that we, we want, and that's what they, they provide or something, you know, equal.
Equivalent.
Yeah.
So I got one, one yes to reopen it, I got two no's, and I need.
I don't wanna reopen it.
Nope. Okay, that's all I got, moving on, thank you very much.
Thank you, Marty.
You know, please tell me that we're just gonna agree to this thing, because I, I run through it and I don't, I, I guess.
Why are we doing this? Who's coming up that we're doing this for?
Mayor, members of the council, I have Jason Arsvold here from Ellers, able to give us information.
Cooking down the road that we're doing this for.
A current one, yep, so that's why we're doing this, so, I'll invite Jason up to speak.
Oh, the neighborhood?
I don't know any details, so, give it to Jason. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So, the reason why we're here briefly is because a request did come in from a project that wants to access some conduit debt that cities can issue on their behalf, and the reason that they wanna do that is to really help their project be more affordable ultimately. I'll talk a little bit about that, I'll go through this quick. What I'd learned, we didn't know initially what the project was, it just said, there's an interested party. And so, you know, Zach and I talked, we said, well, there's no real policy that you have in place about this, don't even if the council's interested in even undertaking something like this. So we thought, we better have this conversation. So, since learned that it's a project that actually isn't in Dayton, and that's okay, that happens all the time. But you, you would be issuing for a project that actually isn't located in the community, I think it's in Andover. And it's a school, and I think that the tie-in is that it has potentially students in Dayton that attend the school. So, so it's very common that cities will reach out on this, for these reasons, and we'll talk a little bit about that. Just real quickly, what are these, why do cities do this, what are the common practices around this, what are your risks? And then there is a proposed policy, if you so choose to undertake this. So what are conduit bonds? These are bonds issued by the city that benefit a private entity. And usually, it's a nonprofit housing or industrial type usage, so you've heard of like industrial revenue bonds or things like that. Aren't as common anymore, but usually, this is like a, like a housing project would, would wanna access this type of thing. That's what we see most often, there are hospitals and schools, facilities like that, nonprofit nursing facilities that access this type of financing. These proceeds then are loaned to that private entity and they pay for project costs, they build buildings, they do things like that. The reason it benefits them is because they can access tax exempt rates, so their borrowing is cheaper, makes the project more affordable. And the, they are then obligated to repay the bonds, the city isn't obligated to do that. And the city's not at risk for repayment, and your credit risk is, your credit is not at risk for repayment. These are, these are, you're the conduit, that's, that's the definition of the bonds. These are held in a separate trust and then paid by the project, and then bondholders are paid that way, you're completely out of the loop on that. So why do it? Usually, it's done to support a local economic development project, a regional economic development project. Like I mentioned, you know, you'll see it sometimes, tax credit apartment housing projects, like, you know, years ago, the Dominion project that was proposed here, that, that would have been a project financed like this, you would have ultimately been asked, had it gone forward, to do something just like this for that project. And the other reason cities do it is you can charge a fee. So that is one of the other reasons that cities do this. It's also the reason why cities that have projects that aren't in their cities do this, because they can collect that fee and there's no risk. So that's, those are the two reasons, and, you know, you can decide how you wanna handle that. But if you do decide you wanna actually participate in financings like this, it's a good idea to have some kind of a policy in place that indicates to those that wanna apply what your fee ultimately is gonna be. And generally speaking, what we see is that these fees can range from, from 1/8 of 1% all the way up to 1% of the power amount of the bonds. Oftentimes, they're charged upfront, so you take the money right upfront. Sometimes, there are fee types that charge annually as the bonds are outstanding. It's a little more complicated to administer that, and there are some disadvantages to that, so we don't generally recommend that, it's probably just easier to do it upfront. And then some cities actually charging an application fee to review this all as well. So what happens is that there's an application made, your city bond attorney actually helps you with these things. These aren't bonds that municipal advisors like Ellers actually get involved with, we don't, we don't help you with this at all, we don't benefit from this, we don't take a fee for any of this, we're not even involved. So we're just working with Zach to kind of work through what these policies would look like, if you so choose to do something like this. So just a quick comparison, we had done a quick comparison of some of the fees that are out there. As I mentioned, they range from 1/8 of 1% to 1%, that's the middle box that's highlighted there. And then show what that translates to on a bond issue of approximately 6 million dollars. Chose that because that's what they initially told us approximately those project costs might be for this particular request. Might be a little less than that, but you can see there, a 1% fee would yield a $60,000, you know, fee to the city. Those are dollars that you can then choose to direct in any way you wish for, for city, for city needs. Generally, it's to offset the cost of administration, administration is generally fairly minimal on this, we'll talk a little bit about that. As I mentioned, the risks and costs, so there's no risk of repayment or credit in the event of default. If the, if the project defaults for whatever reason, there's no repayment, the bondholders are on the hook for that, it does not affect the city in any way, the borrower takes on all this risk. One thing that can happen is that it can affect your annual $10 million bank qualification limit. So this gets into the weeds a little bit, but you do have a, what's called a $10 million annual bank qualification limit. And that does apply to the bonds that you would issue for other general city projects. What that means is if you issue under $10 million per year, the bonds can be designated bank qualified. All that means is that the bonds can be purchased by banks. And so it broadens the market for who can actually purchase your bonds, and it can lead to lower interest costs. So if you can, you like to preserve your bank qualification limit. And the reason why this project, as I understand it, is coming to Dayton is because the, the city that it's in has or will exceed its $10 million bank qualification limit for this calendar, for this calendar year. So when that happens, they generally then tend to shop it around to other cities that might be interested in issuing the debt. So I believe that's what's happening here. You can mitigate that by doing just what I believe Andover's doing, which is to say that they're not gonna issue for that because it will impact their bank qualification limit, and then they have those projects look elsewhere in other communities. The work, as I mentioned, is, is minimal, the, the staff does need to coordinate with bond counsel, the attorney that's working on the project. And there is a, a public hearing and a resolution that needs to be held, so there's some administrative work regarding that, some work for you all to actually consider that item at a meeting. But that's about it, the payments and everything else are handled, as I said, through a trustee, and that's all taken care of, there's no ongoing city administration that way. And then the project pays for the bond attorney costs, so you're not paying for those either, and then you take your fee that goes along with that. So what you have, if you decide, you, you have, I think, a couple of choices here, you can just say, look, we're not just even doing this, that's totally fine. Or we're willing to consider it, but if so, we're gonna pass this policy that indicates what our fee is going to be. And so what you have actually there in front of you is a, is a policy, it's very simple, if you do choose to do this, that just says, you know, we're willing to consider conduit transactions, we're gonna set the fee at 1% and it's upfront. It does also indicate that the fee can be an alternative amount through negotiation. I can already tell you that a lot of, you saw the list there, some of your neighboring communities are up at 1%, some are much lower than that. And some of these projects will tend to shop around for that fee, just FYI. And in fact, they've already expressed concern about a 1% fee, but just in conversations with Zach, we felt that that was probably what, if you all were gonna do this, was most appropriate. So that's what's in there, you can obviously change that. But if there are circumstances that, you know, you come across one of these that's for a project that you think it's important to support and it can't support the fee, obviously, this gives you the flexibility to charge whatever you want. And then it just lays out what that process looks like, so that it's, you know, clear to folks, you need to apply, you need to submit the information, we need to evaluate it, and you need to pay the fee. And it's as simple as that. So, again, the question really is, you know, you know, is this something you wanna do? And if so, does that policy seem acceptable? And then if so, then you could approve that, in which case, then there may or may not be a future request that comes before you from this latest inquiry. They've already indicated, you know, that, well, if it's 1%, we may have to look at other cities, and so they might do that, which is fine. But then if there's, you're ready, then if another future request comes in like this, which, you know, can happen, they happen from time to time. Some cities, this happens fairly regularly, some cities, it happens once every five, six, seven, eight years. But in this case, you at least have a policy in place in the event that this does happen again. So I'll stop, and I'm happy to answer any questions or go into any more detail about that.
Other than the bank qualification, is there a single downside to this?
No, there's really no risk, I mean, there is some time that the staff has to spend on doing this, so I mean, that, that's really what, what it is, yeah.
Here's the downtime. There's a downtime. If you can get 60,000 bucks, we're gonna end up needing another staff person to watch it, that we're gonna pay 100 and a quarter to. There's the downside.
Well.
It's not, it's not that much work.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Not even close. If it was that much work, Councilor Slade, I would be nowhere near this policy, I would be saying, no way. If it was that much work, Councilor Slade, I would be nowhere near this policy, I'd be saying, "No way."
Can you go back to the costs that are surrounding communities?
Oh, yeah, the chart, yeah.
Yeah. So, 1% would put us at the top end, right?
That's the highest, correct.
And were you just thinking that, just 'cause it's a starting point, or?
Yeah, I mean, that's kinda the idea, and then we worked through the policy and said that there can be negotiation if we feel like it's very, you know, it's appropriate that, you know, it's in Dayton or something, now maybe we negotiate and say, "Hey, it's only a core or an eighth of a percent," or something like that.
But that also assumes that they know that we'll negotiate, right? If they just see the 1%, are they likely to look elsewhere before they have talked to us?
It's written in the policy that says, "Other fee is negotiated," but, you know, and if they're, if you're concerned that the fee's too high, then I would say, reduce it in the policy. Otherwise, you know, if Zach gets these inquiries, and there's concern about it, and they push back on it, he always knows that the policy has some flexibility.
So they have to go through you to find out the 1%?
No, they've reached out to likely through Ellers, cuz that's what came through before. If they didn't reach out to me, they reached out to us. A lot of times, a bond attorney just calls us and asks what the city has going on for other debt, you know, to speak to that bank qualification issue, so that's how this came in, and then we got right with Zach.
And you would tell them 1%, but it's negotiable?
Correct, I guess, if that's what the policy, if you pass the policy as written, yes, that's what we would say.
Okay.
So, I had, I had an initial reaction, which was, my initial reaction was, here are more rich people trying to tax, like dodge taxes, cuz it was the tax-exempt, you know, and I have a problem with that. But when you mention, you know, it's for nonprofits, for schools, and then I was like, "Okay, now actually, I'm willing to have this conversation." So, does every single one have to come through and get approved?
Yes, yes.
So, we could, you know, cuz then I feel better, like, like I said, a nonprofit, or building a school, or building a hospital, I feel a little better about than, I'm a developer who wants to put in multimillion-dollar homes, and I would like to avoid some taxes on this. Like, that I have a problem with, but we wanna build a school, and we need, that I feel better about, right? So if it's something where we get to approve every single one, then I'm okay with it. And I would set the fee at 1% because our neighbors are at 1%. Like Maple Grove's at 1%, Rogers is at 1%, particularly if we have the negotiable part in there, cuz then if it is, like, a school in Dayton, we have the right to be like, "Oh, no, like, that's a different story, we're willing to do that." So, I'd be okay with it with those things. My initial thought was, though, wasn't no, but I've come around.
This does seem like a loophole that somebody should have.
It's not, it's not new, though, this has been around a long, long time.
Yeah, very, yeah, very much, it's always in the conversation.
Twenty years ago, we, the hospital issued bonds through the city of Edina, same, same kinda thing.
Yep, it's been around.
How is this different from the pay-go bonds that we've done with TIF?
So those, well, the pay-go and bonds are two different things, Mayor, Mayor of the Council. So, the bonds that, well, the pays-you-go notes that you've issued are pieces of paper that say that you'll pay a developer money from a tax increment district, not a bond at all. And then, the bonds you've issued supported by tax increment are general obligation bonds of the city. So, you're obligated to pay those regardless of what tax increment comes in from those districts. This is different in the sense that all you're acting as is the conduit here. You're not responsible for repayment of these bonds in any way. There's, the tax code allows these private entities to leverage your tax exemption status to issue these bonds and keep you out of the loop on the risk piece of it.
Can I ask how much tax they're avoiding? If we charge 1%?
Well, at the moment, well, that's an upfront one-time fee. So, the interest is every year, right? There, it's approximately 1.5% is the spread taxable tax-exempt. Their private financing, that's on like a GO-type bond. Their private financing would probably be much higher than that. So, you know, they might be able to access, you know, money at, let's just call it 4%. Or privately, they might be even higher, maybe 6, 6.5, 7%. So it's a big savings for them.
Yeah, cuz I don't, I'm happy to take money away from banks, I have absolutely zero problem with that, I would love to do that. What I don't wanna do is help people dodge taxes, that I don't wanna do. But as long as they're not actually, as long as it's reasonable, and I would like to make sure we don't go past our 10 million city or bank, like, the city's limit of the.
We would know that.
Yeah, and, yeah, Mayor, Mayor of the Council, you would know that if, for say, "Hey, this, you were gonna plan on issuing a debt for XYZ item, we gotta pay for it, so just so you know, we get any of these." This is the first one I've received since I've worked here, so. This isn't like it's common, otherwise, I would've brought this policy to you well before this, but it's been almost five years.
I'm curious more generally, what makes this attractive to banks? I mean, they're issuing these bonds at a lower, purchasing these bonds at a lower interest rate. What mitigates or reduces the risk to them that makes them wanna offer a lower rate? I mean, the city's putting its name on it, but we're not obligating ourselves to anything, so. I don't understand how that's better collateral, or why, you know, why they would wanna offer a better rate for this kinda thing.
Yeah, the simple answer is that the interest earned by the bondholders is exempt from federal taxation. So, they don't pay taxes on that interest. And so, therefore, they will agree to offer a lower rate that, because of that offset. Just like any bond that's purchased, even just generally that the city would issue. It's the same reason why, you know, your GO tax-exempt bonds are a favorable rate because the folks that buy them, they'll pay tax on the interest that they receive from you on those bonds. So they do the math on, okay, if I have a taxable, you know, rate on this bond, and I earn this much interest, and then I pay taxes, I only have this much left over. But if I buy this bond, and I pay, you know, this much interest, which is lower, but I have no taxes, do I come out ahead? So they kinda do the math on that and figure out where they, where they end up. Does that make sense? It's the simplest way I can explain it.
There's a reason why the tax code is.
Yeah, and that doesn't really come into play on whether we do this or not. And I think you, well, I think you kinda talked about where the 1% came from, I was curious about that, about that piece also.
Are we gonna also ask for an application fee?
That's what's in the proposed policy.
I don't think we have an application fee in there.
I thought there was a $2,500.
That is a host approval fee. And so, maybe I'll just talk about that for a minute. There are times, like in this instance, where, you know, if it is Andover, that's where the project is located, they still have to pass a host approval resolution essentially, allowing you to issue bonds for a project in their city. And you may someday be asked to do the same thing, maybe there's a project, you're over your bank qualification limit, but there's a project that wants taxes and financing, and a neighboring city's willing to be the issuer. You would still have to process some paperwork, and for that, you could take that $2,500 fee. Because there's still some work you need to do, and so, we did include that $2,500 host approval fee. And you'll see that, well, on the right side of the chart there, there are cities that have that in there as well. Some expressly stated, some don't. But, yeah, so there is that as well.
Which would not be the case in this current situation, cuz.
No, because you're the actual issuer in this case.
We're the actual issuer, we're not the host.
So it would just be the 1%?
Yes, right.
Would you recommend an application fee? Most of the, well, maybe half of the cities have an application fee?
Most of them that have the fee have a lower percentage. And so, kind of in coming at the higher percentage, we thought, "Well, that's probably enough to cover all of it."
Except Maple Grove.
Yeah, except Maple Grove, right, yeah.
It's always exempt Maple Grove.
Except Maple Grove.
That's always how it works.
And Bloomington is right up there with them, so.
And so, you can see, some cities have started, the par amount, the size of these bond issues has gotten very large because, you know, just prices and costs and everything else. Some cities have decided to sort of bifurcate that. Woodbury's one example at the bottom there, they, once they get over 10 million, they reduce it. And then they also reduce it to promote, if they have an affordable housing project that is accessing these, they reduce it down to the one-eighth of 1% for that type of thing, and for certain schools as well. So, there's different ways to slice it, we start it at the 1%, and then, of course, it's your prerogative wherever you wanna set that.
Zach, from a staff perspective, do you think an application fee on top of the 1%, or you think 1% is fine?
Nope, I think 1% is fine.
You're the one who needs to work, so.
Yep, I don't think it's gonna, it's not gonna cost me another person. And it probably will only cost me a few days' worth of work in total for the whole year, if that. And I don't think it'll be that much. And likely, I'll probably have our accountant do it anyway, so.
1%, and then with the negotiate, with the little caveat that we will negotiate if, I'm cool with it.
Motion?
So we needed, was there a number with this, or just a policy?
Just a policy.
Okay, motion, second.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you.
Item L.
No free ride for nobody, if you can't make it, treat you like another nature if you die.
You wanna recess? You wanna?
Go ahead.
Okay. Oh, you won't?
I could take a recess.
All right, you know what, let's, let's.
Okay.
Five-minute recess?
Five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess, okay.
We are back.
Great, John.
Great, thank you. So, this is preliminary plat approval for Legacy Woods, as well as a zoning map amendment from A1 agricultural to A3 agricultural. The, I don't have a large area map, so. This project is located off of North Diamond Lake Road, north of Lake Laura. Closest cross streets would be North Diamond Lake Road and Xanthus Lane. Xanthus Lane is down here. The total project area is 107 acres. The development is proposed to be subdivided into 10 lots, so lot sizes are generally, I wanna say it was around between three acres and 25 acres, I believe. And the lot averaging is two units per 20 gross acres, so it's consistent with the A3 district. Yeah, okay. I think my slides are out of order, so we'll see where we go with this. With the preliminary plat, again, this is, well, I'm gonna call it a conservation PUD on this slide. So, within the 2040 comprehensive plan, there's areas that are identified as greenway overlay. And so, any property that touches a greenway overlay is required to be a conservation PUD. And so, the question becomes is, what is it about this property that is unique, that's worth preserving? In this case, the Plan Commission's recommendation is to require a conservation easement that preserves a connection between, I'm gonna say, the south wetland complex and the north wetland complex. The easement or the conservation easement would be inclusive of wetlands as well as the wetland buffer. But the only, the main, and those are areas that are already protected by code. The main difference as a conservation PUD is this segment from the south wetland to the north wetland. This corridor is roughly, it would be 25 feet wide.
And John, what was the, what was the point of that?
So, the comprehensive plan does require a conservation PUD, and the question is, what does that mean? So in this case, it's to preserve a continuous corridor that connects natural areas. So the continuous corridor would be a 25-foot-wide corridor connecting the two wetland areas. Why 25 feet is because for wetland buffers, we require an average buffer of 25 feet and a minimum of 10. When this was first presented to the Plan Commission, there was a discussion including a wider area, and the Commission's recommendation is that if someone's buying this lot, they should have the ability to use the lower area however they want. But still complying with the intent of conservation, PUD is having, continuing a buffer area along the western property line.
When I'm looking at the wetland, like the NRCS wetland, I think it's the NRCS? National Wetlands in inventory. They don't have that full north, well, kind of that central, yeah, they don't have all of that listed as a wetland. So why is that, like, that, where your cursor is now, yes, but to the right of where your cursor is, is not indicated, that part is not indicated as wetland, so why was that included?
This is highland, so, and I'm gonna say, if you wanted to take, leave it in or out, it's up to the council. So this circle area is, I'll just refer to as an island of highland within a wetland.
Yeah.
I would think we would wanna take it out?
I would, I mean, I, like, whoever owns that should have the right to use it. The wetlands, I wanna save, there's not enough wetlands, and it's messing many things up. But I think they should have that little circle of wetland, or highland.
There's, it looks like there's a couple of them in that area, John.
But that's the biggest.
Yep. Oh, no, that is there.
That got carved out.
There's that little.
Yep, that got carved out.
Yeah.
My question to John and the mayor of the council is, would you like to do it based on the wetland delineation that's done? Cuz we're waiting on that still, we don't have that finalized yet.
Correct, so I mean, that, yes, I guess with the addition of the. So, I mean, that, y-yes, I, I guess with the addition of the 25 feet along...
Is that something the council would be like to do, is just have a, again, we don't have a wetland delineation done on this par, parcel, which is why you don't have a final plat in front of you, cause you don't have those all finalized out yet? But if that's something the council would like to do, just do a wetland delineation and follow that as the conservation PUDs? Does that seem reasonable? With the 25-foot buffer that connects on that?
Yes, yes, I'd be fine with that.
Okay.
Well, except the, that connection piece that...
Get that, as we said, accept that.
That is not necessarily wetland.
Correct.
It's just to preserve that connection from wetland.
It's the definition of a conservation PUD, we have to have it contiguous.
But what is the, so, so, I thought you had mentioned it has to be anywhere from 10 to 25 feet wide. Why did we go at 25?
Average.
It's an average. So, it, it can be less or more, but, um, it's consistent, the idea of the 25 is it comes from the wetland buffers. The wetland buffer is a minimum of 10 feet and an average of 25.
But there's no wetland there, right?
Yep. So, the a- using the average of 25 is because at points, you can have it be 10 feet minimum, or you can have it be 50 feet, but on average, in a, in a parcel, it has to be 25 feet averaging. So, within X number of feet, like, you have to have...
So, the 10 to 25 is in the range?
No, it's a 10 minimum, and then 25. So, then at one point, it has to be 50. So, we could make it a line, but it seems easier to make it just even at 25 feet.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Just cause it's on, it's all on one parcel. It happens to be on one parcel, and so, because of that, you have...
Okay.
Wetland buffers that are averaging 25.
Keep track of it.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I'll kind of go by these one by one, maybe. So, any other questions on the conservation PUD?
I had a question about why we added that to, so, along Lake Laura.
Yep.
Why, if there's already a, a federal law, and/or state laws, why would we add a conservation easement onto that? And, and, well, the, really, the reason here, and I'm asking is, because if somebody wants to open up a beach area and put a deck in there, conservation easement doesn't let them do that, right?
Depends on how, what's written in the conservation easement. So, you, you can modify it, well, there's lots of, there's lots of options. But I guess I'll just say, whatever your intent is with the conservation easement, you should be clear on that. So, if you want to allow a beach, uh, for instance, uh, you know, allow some exceptions with it.
I'd rather yank it. What's the benefit?
Rather than not even have it in there.
Right, that's what I'm wondering, why, why would we even have it there?
We don't even have to have it, right?
It, it's up to the council. So, it's because it's a conservation PUD. If you want to take that, the lake shore out, you can...
I, I would.
Absolutely, I would.
I would. Only because it, it seems like that it's an additional...
A restriction to the property.
So, we got, so we got two.
I guess I don't, I don't see the need for it either. The, so, the area north of that bay, or, I mean, north and east of that bay, trying to follow the contour line, so that's all high ground, that's not wetland there.
Yep, all high ground.
Yeah.
None, none of that needs to be there.
No, I don't see the need for it either.
Doesn't have to be there.
Well, and, that's already pulled out.
All of this.
Like, that's already pulled out, yeah.
Yeah, they still have to follow DNR rules.
Yeah.
They're not removing anything from any other agencies.
Anything that's, that's the nearest point, is there's already all of these other rules in place protecting the shoreline, why would we add a fifth?
Yep. Yep, sure. Exactly.
So, the directions remove the lake shore?
I would.
Out of the conservation easement.
From a majority of the councils, what I'm hearing, so...
Okay.
And again, I'm fine with it because there's already other rules in place. And I wouldn't be fine with no rules.
I don't want to add any riprap rules to it.
But there's already rules.
Yep.
There are enough.
Other questions on the conservation piece? Let's see if I can, okay. I know what I'm doing. Um, zoning, so, uh, the intention of the A3 district is to include northwest Dayton. Um, the qualifying parcels, again, are parcels that are 20, no, over 20 acres or more that can be divided into a density of two homes per 20 acres. Uh, the project is, uh, this area in red, so this is just demonstrating it's within the A3 district. Um, also, the hatched area represents the, uh, const- greenway overlay area. So, this does have a large wetland complex, um, and that's why it's in the overlay. With A3 district, the minimum lot size is one and a half acres of high ground. Uh, this project is, the smallest lot is three acres or 3.1 acres of high ground. And it, it more than meets the minimum lot requirement of 140 feet. Uh, with the A3 district, it does require, uh, the option of, I, I'm just gonna summarize it, it's fi- five different assurances that the project can be re-subdivided in the future once sewer is available. Um, in this case, uh, the developer has provided a ghost plat, uh, to R1 district standards showing how, uh, once sewer and water becomes available, how the project could be re-subdivided into more, uh, smaller lots. Uh, the project does have a lot of topography, so, uh, the area, this isn't the best map for it, but, probably don't have one. Um, there, there is a lot of topography, the area that is somewhat shaded and might be better on, on your screens or in the packet, as yellow indicates, uh, slopes that are greater than 12%. So, the assumption is, is that slopes that steep are not buildable. Um, the, uh, kind of the assum- oh, let's see. Uh, on this map, it, it overlays the general, um, idea of where sewer and water would be extended in the coplan. Um, this ha- this map has no indication of where streets are. This is just kind of, I'm gonna refer to as a fat line on, on the map of how do you get sewer and water from point A to point B? Uh, what it does indicate is, um, the western part of the development would serve it, would be served by sewer, uh, from one location. Uh, the eastern portion would be provide sewer from a different sewer line. So, um, it's important that this be ghost plated. The eastern portion, there's many options of how that could be re-subdivided in the future. Um, also, uh, related to the shoreline, we have shoreline district rules. So, the shoreline district rules come into play within 1,000 feet of DNR-protected lakes. Um, this is a natural environment lake, which has, uh, other restrictions as far as the minimum lot size and impervious surface area go. So, if you can kind of see, um, the shoreline district is the area that's shaded in blue, and these lots are slightly bigger than the lots that are outside of the shoreline district. The connection from, I'm gonna refer to this as Thicket Lane to North Diamond Lake Road, uh, does not, is not consistent with the access, Henford County access facing, so as the council's word, North Diamond Lake Road is a county road. Um, the, the intent is that this is a temporary intersection. When, uh, the lots that are to the east are developed at some point in the future, the intent is that this intersection would be closed, and Thicket Lane would be rerouted to Xanthus. Um, as one of the, uh, requirements of the preliminary plat approval is to show how this connection would, could work in the ghost plat. The thought, al-also staff's thought is there's, um, likely going to be some land here that probably doesn't have much value, that, that we're, uh, asking to be planted as an outlaw, and just whether it's dedicated as right-of-way or it's, has some other use. It's separate from this lot, here. And we talked about the conservation PUD, and that was all. Uh, questions?
Um, about the road, there's the, there's that little strip, um, which you can't see on this particular map. But, so, there's the 100-plus acres, right? Um, and then there's that chunk of land, the right next door, and then there's this little rectangle that no one owns. I'm assuming there's an easement there.
Yeah, future right-of-way is what it was intended for. Um, we, staff looked at that, you can see it on the map there now.
Yes, that one.
Um, city staff looked at that as an ability to access this property when we first looked at it, cause that would line up exactly with Xanthus.
Yes.
However, based on the spacing that's there, from what we understand is that it's not able to make it work.
Okay.
Within that spacing, the future right-of-way is not able to use that. Um, we said, okay, well, if it can't be used now, maybe we can use it somehow in the future and/or be able to, um, vacate it in the future. Um, it was, I remember when it was done, but at some point, it was recorded in the county as a future right-of-way.
Okay. But it's not gonna work?
It will not work. We looked at that as a possibility.
Okay.
Uh, we worked with the developer back and forth. We said, maybe we could use this. Um, the problem is, it doesn't set back real well, it's not...
There's a lot of topography.
There's a lot of topography there, too, so...
It'd be more practical to wrap the road around the wetland.
Okay. I was just curious about that, cause I'm like...
I'm fairly certain that at the time, when we got that, we didn't look at any topography or anything, we just said, eh, pick this spot, this looks like a good spot for future right-of-way. That's my, yep.
Sounds about right.
That's my presumption.
Hence why we need a good concept plan that aren't just fat lines on a map, but actually look at things like topography.
It's a plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions? There was a, um, in the, our information, that the planning commission had asked for that consideration be given to include drainage and utility easements along the rear of lots, um, to accommodate future sanitary sewer and water. And, um, you know, I guess, what was the logic behind that? I didn't really follow it when I watched the meeting.
You would be, you would, you'd need to take more thought. So, I, I think the idea is, um, you'd extend sewer and water, uh, be, in between the wetlands and the back of the lots, you know, along the wetland or the wetland buffer line. Um, the other alternative is to put, install sewer and water in the street. You know, the advantage of putting it in the street is, it, it's there, you're not disturbing like, private property. The disadvantage is, is you're going to have to tear up the street. Uh, so, the general thought is, at some point, the street is going to have to be replaced.
But about that, anyhow.
And that's when you put in sewer and water.
Yeah.
Anyways, I guess Biggie's been through everybody's back here.
Right.
Yeah.
No, I...
It's likely never gonna happen anyway.
It's likely.
And if it does, it's a distraction.
When it happens, or if it happens, rather than carving it out. Okay, that was my question, I understand.
Any more questions? Do we have any questions for the developer? We're good? Okay. I need, motion and second.
I'll second.
Give that to Dave. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Alright. On to item M. Who's handling M?
Hey, I'm the council, myself, and Amy Schmitt will handle item M. I don't have a whole lot for you. I was able to have Hayden, the, um, planner two here, put together some information based on what he's learned, and, and I'm kind of sure that, I did share these obviously slides last week on Friday, but just wanted to give some background information. This public roadway drainage utility easement was established in May of 2005 to come to the construction of a single-family home at 14661 Lawndale Lane. The easement has served as an access to that single-family home for nearly 20 years, while the adjacent property to the north is a part of the easement. The easement area is not currently utilized by that north parcel. In the recent months, a building permit application has been submitted for construction of another single-family home on the landlocked parcel directly west of this easement area. Being that this is a public easement, the application for the permit has established an access agreement that extends from the end of the public roadway easement through the parcel to the e- or the west, and then, um, through the north parcel to the existing easement, providing that access to the public street can be provided to the landlocked parcel. Part of the building permit being issued, the landlocked parcel staff is looking for final direction on how to proceed on the existence of this easement.
And I am gonna make a motion that we table this, based, just so, uh, because it, it sounds like we still need more information on what some details are. Yeah.
Can I ask a question? My name is Randy Duke, I own the property of County Lawndale Lane, 14651.
If we table this, I, I...
If you ta- if you table it, then you would be able to have it at a future meeting.
Yeah.
If not, then, it's up to you, mayor.
One question.
Come on up. Name and address.
Randy Duke, 14651.
Wait until you get in front of the mic here. Okay, go ahead.
Randy Duke, 14651 Lawndale Lane. I was the one who signed the agreement back 20 years ago, and I was under the assumption by the city council at that time that this easement would be used when sewer and water came in, and that's when it would be used. Also, if an easement is granted for the property behind, is it a public road then? The same as you're saying mine is?
And that's, I think that's some of the, some of the questions we would have to an- to get answered. So, that's why I would like to table it, or that's one of many reasons.
And there was 60-foot easement. The easement that's asking to be, to be used is a 30-foot easement only on my son's and my property. That's two questions, so...
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
We'd need a second if we're gonna table this.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on tabling?
Do you have a list of what information we still need, or... And will we all be getting the same information up here?
Yeah, when we get it, we would, we would all get it.
Okay.
Yep. Any other questions, or discussion? Dave, did you second that? Clarification on...
Currently, there's a 60-foot, I just heard a 60-foot easement currently, correct?
That's correct.
And we're asking for just the 30, the south 30 feet of the easement? Is that what we're asking for?
We're asking for, and the easement covers 60 feet, right?
The cup, the, the, the easement, um, that was executed in 2005 is, is, is a total of 60 feet. It has 30 feet, um, across the two parcels owned by Mr. Duke and his son, and then another 30 feet across the parcel to the north that's currently owned by, um...
The Jacobsons?
The Jacobsons. I always say Petersons, and staff laughs at me, cause, sorry, the Jacobsons.
And the current roadway that's there is on all 60 feet?
No, it's only in...
Or is it on just the south 30?
It's on just the south 30.
Okay. And my question would be, does the current landlocked piece have the option to put their driveway on the north 30 feet?
I think the answer is yes, but I don't think there's an obligation.
Do you mean a separate driveway, or a single driveway across the full 60 feet?
Either, either or.
Within the full 60 feet?
Either or.
The easement is, the way that it's written, isn't clear about what the rights are between the two underlying owners. Um, the easement, as it's written, contemplated a 12-foot batuminous surface with two feet on either side for drainage, and that it would be built in the, in the southerly 30 feet, and that's what was constructed.
Yeah. So, is a little more clear, I don't know how, how far we want to go into it. I mean, I, I personally don't care if we talk about it in two weeks or whatever, but I think, I think we want clarification and, uh, to end this thing at some point.
Yep.
Uh, is the landlocked piece restricted to only getting the use of the south 30 feet? Or can it use the north 30 feet?
Needs all 60 feet.
It needs all 60?
Or that's, that's, actually, that's one of the things I think we need to understand.
Can the city direct them to use the north 30?
No, I don't, well, I don't know. I mean, the easement's the easement, it's a 60-foot easement. Whether or not they can use that, I think is...
Again, it's not clear within the easement document what the rights are between the two owners, it was, or, the underlying owners of the, of the, of the, of the land that the easement lays across, so to speak. It talks about how the, the, the... It talks about how the, the, the rights that were given to the city by the, by the, by the owners at the time, and so it's, the easement is not entirely clear.
So how do we get that clarity?
Yeah, what I'm after is, is can, can the north 30 feet be used to access the back 20 acres?
In theory, yes.
It is being used right now.
So why don't we just make, like, why can't we say that's, that's what's gonna happen? That they will, that that landlocked piece will use the north 30?
I'm not sure that that's, that there's been an application submitted for that.
I guess I'm questioning what, what's just transpired here.
There may be some limitations on the number of curb cuts that can be made onto Lawndale Lane. That's also unknown to me at this point.
And I think that's maybe the best reason for tabling it, because based on what we've had in front of us, there seems to be some legal jeopardy with four of the five options, and the, the one option to do nothing, you know,
It's not an option.
Has the least risk, but it's, it's not a good answer.
It's not an answer. We can't do that.
Well, it may be our only answer.
We shouldn't.
So I think we need a little time to see, are there, are there some other solutions to this that, that we have the right to enforce?
I just wanna know what's our timeline to get this done?
Who's timeline?
Well, like, we can't have this going on in perpetuity. At a certain point, decisions have to get made, and I'm fine with tabling it if we know, like, we're gonna have these questions, the, like, we, we obviously don't know the answers, but these are the questions we're gonna ask, and we'll come back with an answer in, in two weeks, in four weeks, in six weeks?
Well, I was under the assumption that we had to make this decision and had to use the south 30 feet to access the back 20 acres, but apparently that's not true. I don't know. I mean, because, because to me, if, if there's an option to use the, the north 30 acres to access the back 20, that's, that's the solution. The north 30 feet, yeah.
You have two roads and one easement?
It's one easement, so it either is usable or not. I, I don't understand. This conversation is split in the baby in half. I don't get that. You mean because there's a current driveway on one side?
Correct.
Well, because the actual driveway doesn't take up 60 feet.
I understand that.
Well, and, and to be more precise, it's not technically a driveway. It's a roadway.
It's a road.
Yep.
Because it was a roadway easement that was granted.
We have a lot of questions.
Really? So I guess my question, when, when do we get to ask them, and in what form do we get to ask them, if it's not now?
Well, if you ask them now, now would be good.
And then we can have answers next time.
Well, yeah, my biggest thing is this does... You guys don't want them to sell 30 feet you?
If you want them to come up, we can...
Yeah, I would say...
All right, come on up.
Mayor, I have a question for you. At this point, is it, does this tabled or is this not tabled?
I don't know.
There's still a motion on the, on the...
There's a motion and a second on the floor, and then there was discussion that ensued, and that's why I'm asking the question, Mayor, Council.
Well, it seems like we're still in that discussion.
About whether...
So I just want, I just wanna confirm. I just wanna make sure I understand.
So the discussion was supposed to be on table?
I'm not sure what tabling is gonna do for it. I mean, we can do...
Well, then vote against it.
You clearly have questions that you want to ask before we have the follow-up discussion, right? Like, there are things that need to be...
There's, there's a few, yes.
So...
For one, I wanna know if it's, if it's possible for us to have a closed meeting on this, because there could be legal ramifications of these decisions, but I don't know what that answer is. And I don't think we can just spontaneously have an answer here.
That's right.
Okay. Okay, so then I'm okay tabling it. I wanted to know why we were tabling it. And maybe not all of the details, but...
There are probably 20 other questions, too, that we, that we probably have, but, I mean, as far as splitting the easement in half, that one I hadn't heard yet, so...
Well, and, and...
The only reason I would say that is because I was told there is no access to the back 20 without allowing the road to go in, to the, to use the easement that's there. But maybe there is. If the neighboring property has a 30-foot easement, I, I know for a fact that that goes right back to the 20-acre piece, or there's access to the 20-acre piece. Why wouldn't they not use that 30 feet?
If, if it helps, the, there's a private easement that, so the, the parcel that's owned by the Jacobson is rather L-shaped, right? And so it wraps around the north and the west of the two parcel, of, of the parcel owned by Jason Duke. And so across that parcel, the Jacobson's parcel, is a 60-foot easement that was granted to, that, it perfectly aligns with the 60-foot easement that was, that goes back 20 years. And so that easement on the private, the private easement that connects to the public easement was created to give access to that 20-acre parcel, and from my conversation with the, the attorney for Mr. Quilling, it was my, my understanding from him was that, and from correspondence from him that went to the, to John, that easement on the Jacobson's parcel was there as a requirement of the financing that he obtained during, to, to, to acquire the 20-acre parcel. Because the 20-acre parcel is landlocked but for that, the, the access to the public easement. So by piecing the, by using that, that private easement on the Jacobson's parcel as, for lack of a better word, a bridge, a connection to the public easement, he, Mr. Quilling, was able to have street access, road access from the landlocked parcel, and became unlandlocked, so to speak.
I'm even more confused now.
How wide does a road have to be?
That was my question. The easement, right? How, how wide is it about to be a road?
For it to be a road, how wide is a road? Like, minimum roadside, road size?
Right of way is 60 feet.
Okay. That's where the 60 feet is.
Road size, curb to curb is 28.
Yep. As I say, minimum road size, we have curb to curb is 28 feet.
My question is, are you just after the roadway on your 30 feet?
Can you say that?
On the south 30 feet of the easement, do we want the access going back to that 20-acre parcel? But are you okay if the access to that 20-acre parcel is on the north 30 feet?
Where's that coming from?
Where's the 30 feet coming from? So it's one easement?
It's one easement.
It's one easement.
I think you're saying parallel roads, right? Like, they're...
Well, two parties agree to this easement. They each gave up 30 feet.
That is correct, yep. That is correct, but it is now, it's no longer individual 30 feet. It's one 60-foot easement period. The current dr, the current driveway that's been utilized for the last 20 years happens to be on the south 30 feet, but there is still a 60-foot easement in total. It just happens to be on the 30 feet on the south side.
Are we tabling this or are we continuing to discuss? I know I have more questions than what I had before.
Yeah, I, I would like to get it tabled, and then we can maybe get some answers, some, to us, as to what, what we're really looking at here, what, what our options are, and...
Should we email Amy our questions?
Of the legal questions, yeah.
Yeah, but like...
Yep.
Because I guess that's my, my concern in tabling it is if we haven't actually asked our questions until then, we're still not necessarily gonna have the answers then. Like, at a certain point, the questions have to be asked, so there can be answers.
Yep. And I, I think a lot of this boils down to the language in the easement. What is, what, I guess, what a lot of the information, the legal information is in, in the easement that we have to at some point?
I'm surprised all that information hasn't been looked at already. I mean, we knew it was coming.
It has been looked at, but I, I'll tell you, every, just about every time I have a conversation or look into this, I learn a new piece of information. Tonight, the statement from Mr. Duke that the easement was to be only used when the sewer and water came in, that's news to me. So every single conversation I have about this changes.
But is that, is that in the easement? Is that stated?
It is not. It is not.
Then it's immaterial.
But if we were to, if, if the council were to be in a situation where the, the easement is to be interpreted by a court, some of that information could be relevant. So it's just, it's, 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 it's a very challenging legal situation.
Note to self, we will write their easements in the future.
Correct.
Amen.
I do have all the paperwork and copies, and I think you guys probably still do. I didn't have time to gather them all together, because this was a two-year process for me to get that.
If you're, if you're willing to share that, I'll happily accept it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so where are we at? We have a motion to table.
Ask for a roll.
And we have a motion and a second to table. Any more discussion on tabling? All right, all those in favor of tabling this, say aye.
Okay, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right, so it is tabled.
You guys sat here for three hours for nothing. Three and a half, actually.
Got to experience the city hard at work.
Trying.
No, you do.
Just like this.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you again.
Item... Parkway Neighborhood Phase Two.
Thank you. This is from here. May is, I think, step, count your steps, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, doing good. Okay, so this is a preliminary, preliminary plan approval and site plan approval for Parkway Neighborhood Phase Two. So just to explain the whole story again, this project is off, I'm gonna call it the south intersection of Interstate 94 and 94 in Dayton Parkway. The overall project has three phases. Phase one is 180-unit apartment building, which was approved, I believe it was March?
Yes.
If I remember right. Phase two is, I'm going to refer to this as lower-rise apartment buildings and townhouses, and then phase three is 150-unit apartment building that the council hasn't seen yet. So again, phase one has been approved. Phase two is tonight. And I'll add, it's very possible that phase two will be built before phase one. Okay, so phase two consists of 14 acres and 273 units. I'll just add that we do have a revised plan that's slightly different than the one that's in the packet. The intention is, or I guess my recommendation is the council to approve this project. If the developer would like to amend this project later on, we can go through that process, but tonight, it's, the plan that you have before you is being recommended for approval. And I'll get, it's slight changes with it.
But if you approve it...
Then it would be amended.
You just have to amend it.
So generally speaking, with a preliminary plat, you have, you have a project, and there's going to be minor changes that are done to it before final plat approval. And the question is, is it insignificant changes? So if it's significant, then it would be an amendment. If it's insignificant, then it would just go through, we would note that in the staff report at final plat.
To know, to know for the council, there is no definition for insignificant or significant, so...
Right, and it's, this is a large project, and so the, the changes, the developer is reducing the number of units by, I believe it's six, and then adding more parking. So there are changes. We, we don't know what the effect is on the grading plan or stormwater quantity.
Reducing the number of, oh, maybe we should wait. Let's see, which units are we talking, the reduction, where?
I'd have to have the developer clarify that.
I don't...
Okay, so I'm gonna refer to just the plan that's in the packet. So the zoning, the property is zoned for GMU 5 or general mixed-use District 5. This is intended for mixed-use, so commercial and residential. This project is entirely residential. Deviations from the code, and again, this is the code, the plan that's in the packet, there's a deviation for 34 surface parking stalls and 32 garage stalls, as well as reduced setbacks from 20 feet to three feet for the clubhouse and five feet for some of the apartment buildings. There are many apartment buildings, and the setbacks do vary quite a bit. With the PUD, there needs to be a public benefit, so there's kind of a give and take with it. In this case, the public benefit is the concentration of open space in the Greenway. As we kind of discussed in the previous project, this property is also within the Greenway corridor area, which requires a conservation PUD. This was discussed more in depth at the preliminary plat, preliminary plat approval for the first addition. So the corridor generally, you know, there is an expansive wetland area. The conservation area is more intended to be focused around this wetland complex, the floodplain area, and then this wetland complex. Not so much with phase two. Emergency access, so a question for the council. With the first addition, well, I should say, this is a long dead-end road. It, it's possible that the road could extend into Maple Grove, but it's never going to connect to any other streets. With the first addition, there was a requirement that whoever builds first, the south side of Dayton Parkway, whether it be this project or the neighboring project, would be required to build a, a emergency access road between this cul-de-sac and Brockton Lane. We've had indication from this developer that they may not build any, you know, in the immediate future, so the question I have for the council is, would you still like to require this to be built if this is the first project constructed?
How would that help anything?
So there are alternative access points. So there are three alternative access points. One is the existing farm access road, which this is private property. Second is along a proposed Three Rivers Park Regional Trail. That has not been constructed, but will be in the future. The third access point is off of this cul-de-sac. These two points are within the floodplain, and so the idea is if the emergency is because it's flooded, this access isn't going to work. It's going to work probably the majority of the time. It's not, there's a culvert that goes over this creek that is not able to support fire trucks. It can support light-duty vehicles, so ambulances or a police car would be fine, but not a fire truck. This, if the developer is required to build this, this is a considerate or a significant cost to the project.
And to answer your question, Mayor, the reason why that is being required is based on the fact that if that intersection was blocked, we'd have to have another way to access into there if there was some sort of emergency, typically looking at like a tornado, some sort of weather event, that access would then not have to be in the floodplain and would then be able to support a fire truck.
But when development happens on that side, where is the access?
On this side?
Yeah.
Through, through the same access point.
But...
The red dotted line is just an emergency access point.
It, I get that, but I'm confused. So if the intersection was blocked?
Yep.
That would be an access point. But when the development happens on the west side, that access point there, that mercy access goes away?
Nope, it would stay.
It would move?
Well, like...
They have to build around it?
Yes.
It, it might move, but it's still going to connect.
What's the cost of that?
I, I don't know.
Can I, I have another question. Just so that I make sure I understand, this emergency access point, like the row, you should call it a road, question mark? like the road, you should call it a road, question mark, is that...
Not an access, yeah, it would be blockaded, or what do you want to call it, breakaways would be accessed on the other side, so that you could drive through it with a fire truck or a police vehicle, but it would not be able to be utilized by it.
Are we talking about a 10-foot-wide piece of pavement? What are we talking about?
It would have paved.
I'd have to have the chief on that one. I don't know, how wide would it be? I don't know that answer.
Okay. Have to get a truck across.
Yeah, the emergency access chief, would that be 15-foot wide, eight-foot wide? I don't know what it is.
The one to the south just needs to accommodate a pickup or a rescue or something like that primarily, just so we have that availability or ambulance to get into that location. The discussion has been, is looked at this holistically of how could we get there if we did have that emergency because there's some catastrophic event along the main road to come in. So, we're trying to come up with something that's amenable to both public safety and to the developer.
But how, the emergency access on the north there, are we talking about a 10-foot-wide piece of pavement? Or what are we talking about?
That one there, I don't recall. Do we...
Generally, I think the code requires 20. I guess the question would be, is could it be 10 with a pull-out every so often? Yeah, to get in there, I mean, that's an impediment on the other developer, if you will, because it's in their property. But I prefer to build there or to have an access road, I guess. The preference is, again, the preference would be to actually be able to get a fire truck down that one, because otherwise they have no means to get a fire truck down there.
Right, so is that 10 feet?
No, the minimum for that is going to be probably a standard, I mean, a ladder truck or regular fire trucks are eight feet wide, so you're probably going to need at least, probably 20.
20-foot road, five-ton, probably, or...
Yep.
Not tracking something. So, if the truck needs eight feet and or 10 feet, why would we require a 20-foot-wide road?
If we have two-way access, it'd be primarily one means if there's two ways going in and out or two vehicles.
But this is in an emergency situation where that intersection's not accessible. I mean, that's...
Right.
How does that happen?
I see what you're saying, Mayor, without a doubt. It's just an ability to, you know, we can make it 10 feet, 15 feet, I guess, to make it adequate.
So, this wasn't decided already before?
Well, so the requirement in the first phase was to build this.
Yep.
And I guess my question is, it's, the assumption is that this cul-de-sac would be built this year, and that's not going to happen. So, the question is, if the developer is required to build this section, it's really from this point over. It's twice the length.
To answer your question, Mayor, we have not designed this at all. It's just been a high-level idea. We need to have some sort of secondary access into this parcel.
You want to come up and talk?
Hi, everybody. You want to start with this?
Yeah.
So, Ben Delwisch with Cos Wilson Architects, 1301 American Boulevard in Bloomington, Minnesota. So, first, regarding the secondary access point, the kick-in for that with multifamily apartments is 200 units. So, from a timing perspective, we wouldn't have 200 units up and planned for in, for maybe, what do we say, two, three years. So, I think that buys time for that second means of egress to actually be required from a code standpoint. Regarding the code standpoint, kind of like a room that needs two means of egress, they have to have a required separation distance, one-half the diagonal distance of the site. So, really, the secondary egress on the south is that secondary means to meet code. Code does not specify what the consistency of that means of egress is, but from our standpoint, that south means of egress, in which we've talked to the fire chief about getting secondary emergency vehicles down, is how we're complying with when we get over 200 units.
That's the one that goes north and south?
The east-west, sorry, on the bottom there, which is the existing farm road, and it's currently, you know, most of the year could be driven upon. It just is, I think, maybe a foot or two low in certain spots on the property from where it needs to be on the floodplain, which is two feet below that marker. So, the secondary access on the north would be, I guess, more of a preference from the city standpoint in the event that that intersection was closed, but from a access standpoint, we are relying on that south road as the emergency second means of egress.
So, if something happened, that's the one that has the culvert that can't support the fire truck? So, if something was going on at the intercept, the main entrance, we would not be able to take a fire truck, the ladder truck, or...
Councilman Henderson, that's correct. We wouldn't be able to, the culvert does, will not sustain the weight of, we believe it won't sustain the weight of a fire truck to get back there.
Sorry. Is there an option or a way for them to, this is really roundabout, fix the culvert to be able to handle, to use that as an access, or is that just a no-go?
I'm going to defer to the developer because I know we've had, and I don't recall, Mike, is this part of your property or no? I think, that's what I thought it was not.
It's a private property guy that owns it, but I want to suggest to you that the culvert that's there right now very likely does support what's already in place. The truth is, we have to call Sands, you know, an engineering firm to figure it out, but like it's, the culvert is built really, really strong, and they've been running very heavy trucks over it. I don't know if they're quite as heavy as Chief, but even in the event, when I was having the road looked at and pricing, we also had kind of a, just a simple add option, remove and put in a brand-new culvert that, I think, Chief told me 80,000 feet, tons?
Eight thousand.
Yeah. So, I have a price that in the event the one that's there doesn't work, wipe it, be replaced, and no problem.
And you have an agreement with that landowner to do that?
No, no, no. I just got the price and so on and so forth. I mean, I spoke to him. He was actually here.
It's not, Mayor, it's not quite that simple. I know that Jason would be commenting about related to DNR, wetland, stormwater thing. It's not, it's not quite as simple as pick-up and drop, but I'm not going to put any words in Jason's mouth. I just want to make sure that's not classified.
The culvert can be replaced, and then, and then the other stuff is that the road as a whole is in the floodplain and all this kind of a thing. So, you know, it isn't the most perfect, which is why I think Zach and the boys had come up with this idea up on the north. But the truth is, they've been using that road for 50 years very regularly with large, you know, large equipment and large trucks. It's just not, you know, quote, pretty, right?
And this is a farm road? It's not paved?
Correct, it's dirt.
It's not a public road either.
Right, so my next question for Gary is, the tanker frequently gets stuck in swampy conditions. We've had it towed multiple times this year. So, my question then is, is from a fire standpoint, is that, obviously, we don't want to play like the worst-case scenario, but we kind of have to in this service, right? So, worst-case scenario, we're going to a fire, the tanker sinks in the mud on that farm road, and you can't get water in there. So, I guess I'm just wondering, like, is the preference of the fire department would be to use the other?
Well, yeah, I mean, one, Councilman Henderson, Mayor, Mayor, Members of Council, the reality is, I'd love to have that paved, but it's private road. The developer doesn't own it. We've been looking at this for quite some time, trying to figure out a means to, you know, figure out how we could, you know, make it amenable to everyone. But you are correct. We have had the tanker and or engine stuck on nothing but just wet ground, where we've had to have birdies come and tow it out. So, we do have those challenges without a doubt. So, trying to make it, you know, again, we always plan for the worst, and often it's not needed, but I'd rather stay off the news and be prepared in that capacity, but also try to work with the developers the best that we can.
Correct. Again, just wanted to highlight the fact that, you know, we do plan for the worst in this profession, and unfortunately, you're showing up at the worst of times to help with the worst of situations. So, I guess for me, it weighs in my decision, knowing that it's not a paved road, and that it would potentially make it harder to get access in.
Yep, I completely agree. It definitely would without a doubt, so.
My big question is, that landowner, that landowner doesn't even have to allow you to use it?
Yeah, you would do an easement. You would get an official.
But we haven't done that yet, right?
We've had...
Well, I'm not sure.
We've had conversations with this.
He's okay with it then?
Yep. We've had the conversations.
Why are we talking now if we haven't even talked to the guy?
We've learned.
And at least since we have been kind of, we submitted Phase one first, and we had the same discussion about a fire access around the building as well. And at least at the time, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think you mentioned you would take a truck off the... In the actuality, take a truck off the...
Go to the other side, thanks. Previous. So, if this exit ramp, here's where they're coming in. So, this is all blocked off, and we're talking about here versus here. A fourth one is actually coming in right from here. So, this is the entrance ramp heading south. So, Chief, you're cutting it off, saying you're closed for a minute. Now, you guys see that Dayton taking over this part, and there's just nothing but a fence, and boom, you're right into the heart of this parking lot that can come down and come in. So, I wouldn't rule out, I don't know all the different rules, but at minimum, that's at least another access point.
I guess this is, Mayor, Members of Council, and my guess is that's going to probably be a MnDOT issue. I'm guessing, because I don't get to say yea or nay on that, that potentially could work. Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, I was gonna, in addition to that, and again, I'm not trying to beat you up, so please don't take it that way.
No, no, no.
And you can correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but the amount of time that it would take to block then, to block that road, or the off-ramp to be able to get there, like, we don't have enough personnel on a truck to, and enough trucks, again, worst-case scenario, but to stop that, to block the road, to have it be safe for the truck to access that point.
I have a feeling if that intersection was blocked, something big and bad happened.
100%, but if something big and bad happened, you need traffic control up there, you need people getting in. So, I'm just saying, like, we may not have enough on staff as a volunteer fire department to make that actually possible. So, again, I'm not trying to beat you up, but I don't, from the stand, from my standpoint and my lens, I really feel like that, and again, I know it's substantial, but the addition of that paved roadway, to me, makes the most sense.
Mayor, Members of Council, I'm not going to speak on behalf of MnDOT, but we have hard enough time with Hennepin County trying to get access.
Yeah, they've already denied it.
Yeah, okay. This is a hard no.
Yeah, this is a hard, yeah, we've already, yeah, we've already asked. I mean, again, doesn't mean we can't do it. If there's people dying, we're going to do it for public safety.
We're going to do what we need to do. Yeah, 100%.
Yeah. We're going to do what we need to do.
Correct, but I'm just, we may not have enough to block that anyway. I mean, a truck to block and...
MnDOT has already said no, so we did ask that question.
So, this thing that we're talking about right now, at minimum, would need to or would want to occur at such point because there's 200 units that have a C of O and people moving in. Once it's going above that, is that the trigger on this?
That would, the building code, that's when it would kick in, and assuming we have sprinklers, which we are planning for, so yes.
So, let me ask the following. So, if we're only, right now, this season, there's only so much time and so much product that we can get out, given that it's, you know, almost the first of May. So, there's no part of me that thinks by the end of this calendar year, we're going to have any units actually C of O, right, or have the road started. So, I guess the point with this, and Zach or John, does this, how is this relevant for today?
If the council does some, so the first addition requires you to build that access point. If today's decision is something different, then the question is, which one are we following? Is it the agreement on the first addition or the agreement on the second?
Well, the first agreement is already done, right?
Right.
So, that's what you're following.
Right. Yeah, but we're not building the first addition, so we're going to be building the second addition before the first.
We just need consistency.
I see.
If the direction is build the access at 200, you know, once you hit 200 units, that's fine. But we just need that direction from council.
Once you build 200 units?
Exceeding 200.
Or occupy.
Once 200 people are living there and need help.
200 units.
Well, if that's a requirement, that's, if that's code, that's code.
Correct.
Yeah, it's, yeah, they break it down by units, so.
To my eyes, the one going east and west to the south makes more sense. For one, it semi-exists today. But also, if we're talking about, you know, your bad scenario, you got a tanker truck on fire up on the Dayton Parkway or on the ramp or something that's blocking that whole area, I mean, it's like you mentioned earlier, when you build a, when you build a room and it requires two exits, you can't put them next to each other. Right? There needs to be an alternate way to get to the property, and that's why I think this one to the south works better in my head anyway, that if that's all messed up on the north, then you're not coming through that way. And even the one that, you know, intersects that, comes across further up there, still intersects that entrance road pretty close to where we think that the problem is going to be. So, putting that farther away, in my mind, makes sense as a better access. Now, to the chief's point, you know, you don't want to pile of fire trucks all stuck on that farm road going in either, so there has to be some assurance that the thing is usable, but I, to me, that's still the preferred route.
Yep.
Can we ask that it be upgraded to not just be, or we're going to make the landowner angry, right?
We can request, but we can't make.
No, but we have to require the easement anyway.
We're going to require the easement, and I mean, if you got to put 50 grand into to upgrade a road on this size of project, it's not that much money, really.
Right, yeah.
I mean, you might have to put...
Is he getting his own park access?
I was going to say, what, what upgrade?
Are you bidding this?
You might have to have some crack class five or whatever.
So, we're just talking about a class, a class five?
It's already, it's already class five.
Oh, it is?
Oh, it's already class five, but there's some low spots that you might have to fill in. Maybe there's some rock or something.
From the chief's perspective, it would have to be paved, because if it's class five and it's muddy and it's springtime, whatever. I don't know, I don't know how often it gets driven. I have no idea.
Put six inches of rock down.
I mean, given that we have this time of 200 at minimum, in a matter of a few weeks, right, double-clip, figure it out, come back, have all the facts, make the decision done. It's not impossible.
That south, going straight south, could also...
Well, that, the only thing I would say is, we have fortunately got, I think, some good news with Hennepin, with Three Rivers for the trail on our section. I believe that they have that south section that John has highlighted going vertically, but I'm not exactly sure. I don't know the exact timeline, but I would like to say that we intend to put our part of that trail in when we're doing the road, yeah? And I'm thinking out loud, you know, kind of it's a fingers crossed, their road, what we are doing to spec is 20-foot wide, and it's 16, I think, is how it is. I think it's 10 paved and then three jogged, but it's all, you know, kosher up stuff. So, that may become a viable thing. So, between now and when we do final plat, or, I mean, it won't take long.
And you're at your 200.
Yeah, I mean, and that's a while out, but long before we even get to 200, I can come back here, I got to come back for final plat. If we want, we'll just put it on our, and we'll bring you facts on it, and then we decide how.
So, if I can provide some interpretation, if the council's supportive of requiring a secondary emergency access point, at the time, there's 200 or more units occupied, and whether it's, you know, these three scenario locations or something else, we'll figure that out.
As long as there's one.
Yeah, okay.
Chief, what about a fancy helicopter?
You're going to buy us one?
You want to buy us a helicopter?
Don't give them any ideas.
Knock yourself out. Can I have a ride?
Couple other questions.
Is it on the road specifically, Councilor Solonic, or is it other things?
No, it's other things.
Okay, that's...
I think we're done with the road.
Good, okay. We'll go, let's go to the slides.
I, it'd be best, I think, for the developer or the architect to probably explain the project.
Michael, can you just try to keep in front of the microphone as best you can? No, over, no, no, no. There's no one over there. Just try to keep in front of the microphone over there.
Practice it sitting still.
There you go. Now you have that.
Okay.
Okay.
You can go up and talk to them.
This, we refer to this as part of the neighborhood. I have to just get up and move, I'm sorry. So, up in here is, there are basically three sections of this portion of the neighborhood. What is nice about it is it works in sequence with the first project we did back in March, up top, which is a four-story product, elevator service, and really kind of a traditional apartment, underground parking, and a unit mix that includes studios, one bedrooms, one bedroom den, two bedroom, and three. When we come over to here, we now move into really a completely different type, unit, product type, and we've really designed this quite nicely. If you have, you have any of the fun, the nice-looking pictures?
No.
So, what I would suggest is that...
Probably not.
Yeah, there we are. So, this is our four-story product, typical underground parking, et cetera, and we've kind of gone through that. So, now, we have three project areas, the townhomes, this is 40 units here. We have what's called the cove, which is the coming down and in. And we have one, two, three, four, and five, and these are only two-story units, yeah? In the townhouses, we have two stories down here, and then, as you can see, three-story, three-story back to two. So, it's giving the neighborhood, not this monolithic, and it really does have kind of independent, and so, if you rent at the cove, your units look, it's, everything has kind of got its own identity. And then, we've paid a whole lot of attention, as we've had, you know, a bit of time, getting to here, to really design the physical conditions where we have in, no three bedrooms here, yeah? Three bedrooms are in the townhouses. These are largely one bedrooms and two bedrooms with bigger unit sizes. And then, these are really cool three-story apartments. We call them three-story walk-ups. And the little bit that we've made some modifications is to reduce the unit count and increase the parking. And that's really the small amount of changes that they have in this new, but, so bottom line is, we have what's back here called the flats. This is 176 units. On your papers, it shows 181, right? 181, something like that.
Shows 182.
Okay. So, we've reduced in the new final plans, when we're coming into final, we dropped the unit count about six to maximize more parking, so that our product that we're offering here has a unprecedented ratio in parking by comparison to all of the, you know, kind of competing projects anywhere near. All of, none of these are elevator service, two-story, three-story. This is 51 units. This is the 176, and there are a total of 40 over here. We've done a whole lot of neat stuff in terms of the design of the units, the functionality, the parking, the access. It's a very, very livable product. And it's also, on an average, if we take kind of average rents, these are all going to be a little bit less than this, right? So, this would be the most expensive, and as you come down, it becomes materially important. When rent is 200 and some dollars difference, they're two different customers. So, they're non-competing. It's like having a Chevrolet, a Buick in the old days, and a Cadillac, right? They're each very well done, but they have a little bit different deal. And so, altogether, when we're done, our final unit count is 267 on this. Yours shows something in the 270, whatever, but, so, three projects. On the timing with this plat approval and the way that the current market, and you guys all heard the sort of challenges in multifamily development, particularly with large projects like this, where I have to build this whole 110 units, finish it before I can get one certificate of occupancy. And even when I do, you bring on 120 units at one time, you only have 50 or 60 people to move in, and now you're paying occupant, you know, paying debt service on 60 units at 1,000, 2,000 a piece a month, and there's nothing. Here, we've come up with a really in-sync between the demand matrix, which is tied to your market studies that we've supplied you in the past, to say, what's the demand? We're taking a small part of that demand and putting it towards this and then tying them together. So, the leasing, if you will, the demand side of it is very well tied with our construction. So, as the buildings are built, by example, what we expect to happen first is this project called the flats will be the first up out of the ground. It'll start in September, October would be ideal, or better said, what we're really looking for is delivering units, where building one is about 12 months from right now. End of April, boom, we have our grand opening. The first building comes on, 25 units here, 25, 25, 25. So, these four will run, this delivers in six months, this delivers after seven, eight, and nine, and then throw in another month for, what, stretching that? But that's the first project that we see coming out of the ground, and that will be sufficient as well in terms of the total unit count. 176 is tied with Zach and I on our original development agreement in order for you guys to trigger and say, let's go with the roadway up there coming off of Dayton Parkway. We had a minimum unit count of 150 in order to make that occur, right? So, this is the first project you can expect. It's gonna come out of the ground or start moving this year. And then, frankly, while I'm on that, I should also just say that we've had a very, very nice response from the marketplace in terms of letting them know this project coming on. And so, in addition to working on this, we've had, you know, quite a bit of, from interest in the market on the townhomes as well. So, there's a good possibility that we may have two projects that will come vertical and will, you know, pull permits for, before the end of this year. But all told, we call this the cove, these are called the flats, and these are the Parkway townhomes. So, all three of those. This, by the way, is a community center. It will be built subsequent to, probably as we bring this and get this finished, we'll pull the permits. You kind of need certain units, just like you guys need so many units to get the road underway. I need enough units to go to pull the trigger on that. But, but really, some great designs, a couple small things that you should know that are also incorporated in the new plans or will be by the time we get to the print. So, we reduced, A, the unit count by about six. We added, he'll tell you what the garage count is. But we came in here just a few weeks ago, had a really good planning meeting, and one of the, I think, the good things that came out of that meeting is when we think of these, all of these parking stalls, as you would look at most projects, they just, these guys draw them up as 20 feet deep, you know? And then, you go outside here today and you look at that really cool Ford pickup truck, and that's not working. So, we've agreed, not only agreed, but I like the idea, and Ben figured out how to make it all work where there's some room. And so, we've widened those to 22 feet deep. So, your plans show a little bit too much units, less parking, and shorter, how you say, parking spaces. All of those have been improved, in our opinion, with reducing density, increase the functionality with more parking, and lastly, taking the parking, making them deeper. And a small, eh, you won't probably notice as a blurb, but in these buildings here, we've added units on the main floor where they used to be garages. And so, what's good about that, when you come down that pipe, we've added more green space, because you don't have just pavement running up to your, you know, front of your apartment. There's grass and a tree and so forth. So, the visual, when you come down, is now even interrupted even more. So, with eliminating that kind of long view of, you know, nothing but cars, we got nice blocks of grass that have been added as well. So, I think all of those, when you get them, you'll see each of them are, you know, better than what you have here, and these aren't really bad. But I think we've massaged it and got those improvements. So, that is the plat that we're seeking your blessing for this evening, and that's what I got.
I, oh, we're gonna go first? I have questions. I was, I just, it was just, we just talked about it, so, 'cause my biggest, I would say probably my only complaint was that lack of green space between some of the complexes, where I'm like, oh, like, some of them would be beautiful views, right? But some of the central ones, I'm like, that would be awful.
Yes.
So, my feedback is gonna be, could we, you have more than enough parking, could you eliminate some of those parking spaces for green spaces? And it sounds like you found a way to do something like that.
Yes, and I would say the parking is a little specific, because especially on the, well, really, all of the cove and the flats. If you have a garage stall, the parking stall that's in front of that garage stall has to be for that unit.
Yeah.
So, there's probably a little bit more parking than you would see if those parking stalls were associated with a garage necessarily, so.
And it's probably way too late in this process, so I, before I moved to Dayton, I lived in some gorgeous townhomes in Golden Valley that I loved, and was actually very sad to leave, except for, you know, my horse couldn't live there with me, so, so here I am. But we had, our garages, there was one entrance and the garages were, it was under, but there was only one entrance, so we could have more green space, 'cause we didn't need all of those spaces, like, we didn't each need our individual. So, I wasn't sure if, not for all of them, maybe some of those ones in the center, if there was some way, and maybe not even all one, but like to share, but it sounds like you've already found some solutions to get some green space in there.
We do, and it's, it's not, you know, it won't be perfect, but it's probably along that stretch, four different lengths of grass that are maybe 30 feet long by 20 feet deep, where we had nothing before. And just for a little bit of scale, so, Aaron, maybe I'll... So, in reducing the unit count, so this, here's a 25-unit building. So, now, they're all 25 units. So, just from a scale perspective, you can imagine this footprint here being stamped here and here, there's just a little less building. And then, here on the corners, here, here, and here is where we have units on the first level. So, we'll have green space, more green space kind of along that area. And then, one other quick, and this is a really important update, parking. So, we got everything in, and we do want to make sure that we're, Michael's not calling us in five years saying, hey, we have people parking on the grass. So, this area here with what we want to do for the clubhouse space is really underserved for parking. So, we will and have increased the parking in between these two. All the townhomes slid south maybe 50 feet, so this townhome here is now sitting a little bit lower, and so, this parking lot increased closer to 50 stalls. And we are hoping to, without increasing any width of the right-of-way.
Yeah.
Just do a little curb cut additional and put parallel parking kind of between this main apartment here and the clubhouse.
Only picking up 20 spaces, like, no joke.
Yeah, just for, you know, a big event at the clubhouse, I think would be nice, and then just overflow parking. So, the updates are six less units, more guest parking, and the flats has a little bit more garage parking.
But there's a lot, a lot more parking up at the clubhouse and right across that whole road, this curb cut, I mean, it's already there. We didn't have to expand the right-of-way or anything. And it'll give us 20, 20 additional units. And most of us, if you're going to friends and so forth at these townhouses, there's, when you live there, it's wonderful, right? You got four parking stalls, you're in, you're out, but you have five people over, you know, carrying food, it's not easy, right? So, this, what we've created on that road, it can very much service the clubhouse, but also overflow for the townhome.
Um, you're gonna hate me. It's okay, I'm a big girl. Fire suppression, I'm assuming we have that in this, that connected unit, like...
Yes, correct. So, every building will have a fire suppression system. There's two different kinds, one's a 13R that we will look to use for some of the smaller buildings, but they both qualify for that. And then, with that 200-unit provision, all of the buildings do need to be fire sprinkled. We might try to get the clubhouse out of that otherwise, but here, we just assume fire sprinkler in the clubhouse. So, to answer that, fire sprinklers will be in all the buildings.
Okay. And then, this is another question for Gary, so I'm sorry you're getting all my questions tonight. That building and, so, the ones, yeah, the three-story over, the one that doesn't, nope, other way. Keep going.
Top right.
I know, actually, the ones that are side with diagonal. Keep going, nope, not the next one, the next one after that. Nope, keep going. Yes, that one. Sorry. That's a three-story building. So, my question for Gary is, are we at all concerned about how we would get a ladder truck in there and out of there with how tight all of that is?
Yeah.
Or even a fire truck?
Councilman Henderson, members of council, we're always concerned about that. Michael and I, and we've been talking even back to the first segment of the apartment complex.
Yeah.
How do we get a ladder to, 'cause when he's talking about phase one, that he's not gonna do right now, but we have a, the backside of that, I believe, is gonna end up being five stories that we don't necessarily have access to on phase one for the apartments, if I recall. So, having those discussions of making sure that we have least availability to get ladder to the front of the structure, as long as you can get one side of it, it makes a lot easier.
Can we do something here to Ben, that for him with the...
Uh, just upper left there, between the two properties?
Here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did, yeah. With working with the chief, one of the things we did to get, spinning our, this is, this is basically for chief to coming through as opposed to people, 'cause this is the cove and this is the flats, but, yeah, we connected all of this so that, and he can, you can see right here, too, same kind of thing. So, he's got plenty of ways to get to the face of this building, both from here and through here, and he can go from this project down into this one, just right through here.
Michael, did, sorry, Councilman Henderson.
No, it's okay.
Clarifying question. What are the width, the widths of those connections?
Yeah.
I haven't necessarily seen all of this. I mean, I know, 'cause we've been focusing on phase one.
Uh, so, those are all 24, and I know for the aerial apparatus provision, if you go up to 26, that's helpful. We committed to two extra feet on the driveways.
Yes, kind of what I'm thinking is, if you have people parked there, can we make that turn in front of that three-story building? Yes.
I'll just add, I don't have a slide of this in the packet. There is a plan sheet that has a turning radius for fire trucks.
Do you know what page that is?
I don't know what number it is. It's page C2.01, but it's the first map after the colored pictures.
It just, it looked really tight, so that's why I'm asking. And again, I'm not saying it can't be done. Again, it's just something that I thought, 'cause it's a three-story building there, and being able to get, like, specifically a ladder in there and having enough room to anchor and then just make a turn.
The one thing that we've done in trying to anticipate some of these types of neighborhoods, regardless of it's single-family or like this, is what we've done with the new aerial device that is on order, that has rear steer, which gives us the ability to make tighter turns and everything, and so does our new engine tender as the same capability. So, that does provide us some more capabilities to get into some of these tighter spots, 'cause new developments love cul-de-sacs. So, that's what we've kind of tried to plan for.
Okay. And again, I'm not trying to come down hard on you. I'm just making sure that we can protect the people that are gonna be living in the area.
Right on. I agree.
I have something else not related to this. Should I ask that now, or should I hold my questions? I mean, it's related to this, but not this specific thing. Um, I understand that there's a clubhouse, and I think that's wonderful, like, yeah. There's no park.
Are you kidding? Welcome to the multipurpose, this whole air, going to the number nine of the site, this whole, this whole thing here.
But that, yes, it's a park, it's a flood plain, and it's open space.
But it's, but, okay, but already today, that guy today, what are you doing, Corin? Every year, doing just fine. There's, Ben and I just spent an hour on this today. So, imagine you're in the winter, you've got things like sledding for the kids, you've got cross-country skiing, you've got pond blowing around, how do you say, for hockey and, you know, skating around. During the summer, it's, you know, it's, this is 907 feet off the ground, and 913 is kind of the plane. So, it does, it, right, it's a little bit low, but, you know, the truth is, the guy, they've been utilizing this property for years and years, right? So, in terms of this, and then we've got, you know, we're doing like a trail, that, you know, walking trails around this whole big pond area, et cetera, et cetera, so.
And I think one...
I don't know what park features you would be thinking of, but like, I assure you, I'm interested in having year-round activities happening on that park property that are ext, you know, outdoor in addition to the clubhouse.
And I think one, one really great feature of the project is the connection with the trail and all the effort to get the Three Rivers trail through the development going right by. And this is a great picture, 'cause, yeah, it is a good point. It's very, very usable in the winter. In the summer, maybe a little buggy, but we certainly are planning to, in, you know, make improvements where we can, given the low-line land, certainly trails that people could run on through the trees in the area. Certainly trails that people could run on through the trees and the area, low-cost, effective use of it. So, yes, absolutely the winter, great programmatically, the trail that runs through it, connecting this with, you know, kind of a key piece, I think, is a massive, yeah, sort of park amenity that this includes.
And I think that's great. I think the connection to the trails is wonderful, like, those are really great things, and I'm going to say this with the most respect possible, so please don't take it the wrong way. But my five-year-old doesn't care that there's a trail.
You don't care about a park, you want a playground.
She wants to swing.
Yeah, but we have that.
Yes, but I'm, there's.
Because I don't give a crap about a playground, I want a park.
Right, but you don't have a five-year-old.
I know that, but I'm saying, as far as language, like, we're on the same page on park, you want a playground, you want swings and slides.
It doesn't have to be fancy and beautiful.
But you want swings and slides.
Yeah, we do, and we did get one added. It was a late addition, but.
Right over here.
Yeah, it showed up in the blue.
Seeing over here?
Is that what that circle is?
It is, yeah, it's a bad representation.
Swings and slides.
Yeah, and again, like, I, I like both, right? Like, I love a good trail, and I love all of that, and that's really wonderful, but...
Yeah, you need stuff.
I need something to get the wiggles out, yeah. I got, I got young-ish kids, and so like, and again, it doesn't have to be beautiful, it doesn't have to be huge, but just something for, you know, mom to go out and say, hey. I mean, and you can do that in the field, understandably so, but the nearest park is Sundance in Dayton. It's a long way.
It's right there on the side.
Yeah, and we can look.
Right, I guess I'm just justifying the fact that I think that because this is a family unit, that that wasn't labeled as a park, and I didn't know that from.
It was a very late addition, too, so it's a, it's a fair comment, and I think it is a good addition to, it's actually a fair, it's a little bit better in the updated version than what it looks like there, but it's a fairly big area that we'll program for that. We try to, we had a discussion about where it's located with the clubhouse, with the city staff, and we kind of went back and forth and felt centrally located, kind of where it's shown was a nice spot for it, so.
I look forward to seeing it.
Yep.
Thank you. And there's a, yeah, you're right, there is, but.
You're all good.
We're Dayton, we play outside, so that means a lot of things for a lot of different people, and it could be in swings and slides or open field.
I'm a 50-year-old, 55-year-old kid, and I got kids, and I love going to.
I remember the fingernails.
Yep, so.
Oh, yeah.
Again, it doesn't have to be beautiful, doesn't have to be huge, just something would be nice, it's a want, not a need.
Yeah.
If I could just add to, the blue circle is part of Phase One, and Phase One was approved without the playground. So this is an addition that the developers throwing in there, doesn't have to, but that's what he's doing. The whole project line is going to have 1,000 people living there. And our comprehensive plan doesn't show a park in southwest Dayton, and so there's just no plan for it. So in the staff report, I'm kind of pointing that out, that this is a misstep on our part. It's something that we need a plan for. I guess, you know, with this project, we're not collecting park dedication fees for Phase Two, Phase One or Phase Two.
Phase Two.
So I guess my point is, is this is a problem that we don't have to solve today, but we should solve it at Phase Three.
Just putting out reservations.
Yeah, it's all there.
Okay. It's on, it's on page 193 of the packet, it does say playground. It's between 8B, 8C, and 7.
One, listen, there were 50 pages for that.
I had to break this up all weekend, little by little, through the 200 and 28-page document.
We didn't see a park today.
Oh, there was 400.
193.
Anybody else have any?
It wasn't.
I got one, well, whatever. We're not there yet, we haven't talked about any of the setbacks or anything.
No.
20-foot setback required, and we're going to use three?
Uh.
Show me what that is.
That's a senior request. So the three feet, and Ben, you might need to help me out on this, three-foot setback is for the clubhouse, and then five feet, I believe, I think it's for this building, one of these two, but.
So the buildings are five feet apart.
Less than 20.
Buildings are five feet or 10 feet.
From the.
From the road, okay.
So, yeah, I'd say, if we are pushing it up, it's where the right-of-way is, so it'll be up against the road, which has 20 feet of green space between the actual road, so.
So Ben, can you guess how, what's the distance between these two buildings?
Um, it's at least 20 feet. My guess is it's probably 21 feet, yeah, because otherwise we're really limited on openings, less than 10.
About two and a half parking stalls, so, yeah, I think 20, 20 plus.
The separation between building to building is more on building code, and I think what we're looking at is from property line.
Right. At least on those ones you're talking, that you have that are.
Much better.
It's definitely just the road, never, we never put buildings up close.
We got to keep you, we got to keep you engaged, Scott, look at those small numbers in there.
Make sure your head pops up once in a while. Sarah, did you have more?
I was the setbacks, it was the same question, so.
Any more here?
I do have one just random question. Is the clubhouse going to be open to the public or only for residents?
Probably both.
Okay.
Ideally, we haven't really finished what we're doing on what we call Area Four up there and how to integrate. And then, you know, a combination of the current market and a lot of these renters, I hate to say that, you know, and they don't know how to do oil changes on their car, and they don't do as much cooking as like, you know, years ago. So the idea about starting to do, you know, food and beverage through here and so forth, and really making it kind of a quasi, almost like a country club would operate, right? You come in, you have a food and beverage program and a lot of activities and community schedule, you know, stuff for the different age groups and so forth. So ideally, we want to have a model that can welcome, you know, either just general public or by way of a membership, increased revenue that gives us an opportunity to broaden our services for the people that live in the neighborhood.
Because at one point you said community center, and at one point you said clubhouse, that's why I was wanting to clarify that.
Right, yeah.
Okay. I like irony, but I was just curious.
Yep, little bit in the under.
And it looks like a beautiful building.
You have a big one.
Oh, yeah.
Community center, you have a big barn.
That's a private, that's a membership, so. Or if you're a chicken, they're allowed in. They have a range of it.
All right. We're done with questions, I will take a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, got a motion in a second, and you more discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Marty, I said it was going to be an hour, it looks like two.
All right.
Yahoo, yahoo. Hey, guys, can I, before I go away, can I get one picture with you guys, please, please? I won't share it, I'm not on Facebook.
Only if you got green fingers.
No, I won't put it up. This is like a real memory in my whole life.
You have green fingers, it's nice.
Yeah, no, I won't do it.
I'm cool with that. Yes, we're going to take a one-minute.
Sophie recess.
I won't even call it a, yeah, Sophie. Right here's good.
Yeah, yeah, squeeze it in, come on in, Scott.
I'm good.
You're going to have pretty fingernails this time, yeah.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you guys so much, appreciate it. We'll have all those little items done.
You put a pool table in there, come up and make some money.
Call you a mom, yeah, sounds good.
Okay.
This is Whitney, my daughter, by the way. She wanted, she's getting in the family business, so.
Aren't you excited?
And Whitney gets anything she wants, right?
That's my guess, yeah.
My finger is in the way. No, it's not. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Often a guy my height has to stretch. That's good. Okay, guys, be well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item O, bids.
No, not even.
Yeah, three minutes, please.
This is 28.
Approved a bid, and we're done. How's that sound? Okay, I'm standing for Jason here tonight, so I'm hoping his slideshow is going to do the talking for me.
He actually made a motion. So wait for a second.
Just want to make sure, clarify, we have a resolution with this 28, 2025, just want to make sure.
Yep, that's the 2025 one.
Yep.
So, Dave, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
Happy day.
Yeah.
That's the best, that's the best presentation, isn't it? You get more of them, you get more of them like that, we wouldn't be here all night.
Okay, item P.
Yep, Mayor, Mayor of the Council, here to, Resolution 25 to reconvene the property to the state of Minnesota, which was in process.
All right. Um, Dave? Need a second?
Yeah, a second.
Scott? Any discussion?
We have some comments on this, aren't we? Or at some point we got to talk about.
Are we, yeah.
This is just the first step of the process, so you will have something, come back.
Okay. As far as funding, how the funding happened, we'll worry about that later.
We have to do this first, first step of the process, get it all the way through the county.
Just get it to the.
Get it there, get all the paperwork all filled out.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries five to zero, and if there are objections, we'll be adjourned. We're adjourned. Oh, we're good.